Are we ready? Well, I got forty-five seconds. We're ready? Okay, let's go. I'm gonna call this meeting the Rockport Select Board to order for Monday, June twenty-second. It is being streamed live. I'm not gonna try to write...
I said, "Nobody knows about it because we didn't send that."
Oh, well, I've got a note that says it is.
No, no, I mean, there's no, uh, there's no tag right now.
Oh, okay.
Still a few kinks in the system.
I'll defer to the technology on this one. If you have a cellphone, I'd ask that you please mute it, as I'm gonna do right now. And if you do have to take a call, if you would step outdoors, because if you're in the hall behind us, it gets noisy and we can hear everything you're saying. The first item we have on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for Monday, April thirteenth, and they are before us. April thirteenth, it's the big, long one where we put everything on the warrant. Do I have a motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Second.
It's moved and accepted. As this was a meeting before Owen came on the board, Owen will be abstaining, though if he has any comments about the minutes, he is welcome to provide those. It's moved and seconded. Do we have any comments? Discussion? Omissions, errors? Nope? Okay, have they been included?
Okay, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
You got my corrections, yeah. There was one where it was a select board vote of fifty-four to nothing.
Oh!
I had to change that one.
Wow, okay. I hope you didn't change it to five to four to nothing. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, and those abstain. It is a four, zero, one vote. For those who haven't been involved in this before, typically I will call for a vote on a show of hands. If we're all in favor, then I will rule that it is in order. If there is an abstention, but all are otherwise in favor, we will rule that it is in favor. If there's anyone dissenting, then I will call for a roll call vote. The next item that we have is Tuesday, April twenty-first, executive session of the Select Board. And we have that before us.
Except, second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, did we have a meeting after this? Or did we have a workshop or something? Because I'm looking at it at the bottom, it says-
You're right.
The six o'clock meeting began, and I'm like, what meeting was that? So...
I think it might have been a...
That's where we lit up the cigars in the background?
Budget meeting or something? I can't remember.
Well, I don't remember, that's why I'm asking if anybody else does.
We had a question on these minutes the last time they were tabled, because we weren't sure on one of the votes, I think.
This was April twenty-
We did have a meeting after, okay, so that's-
You know what it was? I think it was the meeting where we laid out all the warrant articles.
Oh, yes, that's right, we had the public hearing on the warrant ar- yes, we had a public hearing on the warrant article.
So, that's basically what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
With no further discussion, all in favor, accepting. Opposed, abstentions. It is four, zero, and one. We were presented this evening with the minutes from Monday, April, uh, May eleventh. They were just provided to us. I have not had an opportunity to read through them. I would entertain a motion to table to our July, I think it's thirteen, May-
I move to table the minutes from May the eleventh.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
To date certain.
To date certain, uh, July-
To our next meeting.
Yeah, to our next meeting, July thirteenth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling? Opposed, abstentions? Four, zero, one. We have the meeting of the executive session from Monday, May eighteenth. I was not present for this. Charlton ran this meeting. I would entertain a motion to accept.
I move to accept.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Because I was not present, I will also be abstaining. Do we have any discussion? Corrections, amendments? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor of accepting. Opposed, abstentions? It is three, zero, and two. And then we have the minutes from our Wednesday, June tenth organizational meeting, which occurred immediately after the town meeting upstairs in the Opera House. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Move to accept.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Do we have any changes? I would like to note that on page two, oh, about a third of the way down, it says, "They will put this agenda, on the agenda for discussion on the June twenty-second meeting. This was in regard to the bylaw changes." I did not receive any requests for amendments, so therefore they're not on tonight's agenda. They were on the draft that I sent out, but I only meant, make that as a comment in case you're wondering, you know, about tonight's agenda. I guess he had to step out. Better remind him than he steps all the way out. Okay. Do we ha- uh, do we have a motion to accept?
Didn't we do that?
Oh, we did. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just noticing one correction, and that's in the-
Oh, yeah.
Owen's name is missing a vowel.
Own?
Like a pioneer.
You, 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 you get to object to that.
I, I, I object.
Okay.
Minor.
Did you find it? It's in the second paragraph.
Oh, spell check will ruin us yet, won't it? Okay.
Uh, actually, and down under C-
Yes.
Um, of funds and payroll.
Oh, yes, there's a typo. The third line under the motion?
Oh, yeah.
It says, it starts, "All funds and P-A-Y-R-O-L."
How come I missed that? Sorry.
I know.
Roll in with the payroll.
So that needs to be, that's a typo. Not a sub-
I just wanted Jeff to get back.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, that was the folks upstairs.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. And Owen, you were here for this.
I was here for this one.
Here for the official act. Okay. All in favor, accepting the minutes as presented, as amended. Okay. And we are now good to go. The next regular Select Board meeting will be on Monday, July thirteenth. Seven PM here at the Opera House. It will be televised and streamed. Some announcements. The Rockport Town Office will be closed on, is it Thursday or Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay, Thursday, June twenty-fifth, between, as I now understand, it's eleven-thirty and one PM?
Uh, no, it says one-thirty. It might-
Well, this is one, this says noon to one-thirty, and I received your minutes, I believe. Oh, your, your manager's report.
My, my manager's report is probably an error.
Okay.
I would go by this.
We will be, uh, the town office will be closed from noon to one-thirty for the annual Town Employee Appreciation Luncheon. Uh, the, uh, Town Office will also be closing early. Now, the earlier one, that's all the town offices will be closed. This one, the Town Office, that's the building at one oh-one Main Street, uh, the, the Clerks' area, will be closing early on Tuesday, June thirtieth. They will close at three PM, so they can finalize the fiscal year. Uh, the Rockport Town Offices, this is all of the Town Offices, will be closed on Friday, July third, in celebration of Independence Day. A couple of others, and I will only announce those that I think are important. There is, for the Cemetery Committee, a leaning and cleaning workshop scheduled for August twenty-ninth. That's a Saturday. It's a short one. If you want to sign up for it, please see Linda Greenlaw. They're gonna be working down in the Warrington Street or Glencoe Cemetery on some initial work on how to lean, how to straighten or how to clean gravestones. I'd also like to announce that the Library Committee will be meeting on Monday, July sixth, at the Town Office at five PM. Normally, they meet on the third Monday of the month, but due to vacations and others for July, August, and September, they will be meeting on non-traditional days, July sixth being one of them. There's also the presentation of the library con- uh, Building Condition Report, which will be Tuesday, June thirtieth, six PM here at the Opera House, and that will be upstairs. That's gonna be upstairs, right?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Is the, uh, library condition report's gonna be upstairs or down here? Oh, it's gonna be down here?
Down here, yeah.
Okay. I had a moment of doubt.
It went back and forth a couple of times.
Yes, okay.
You're allowed to do that, 'cause we all had moments.
Yes, okay. Rolling Stones, thank you very much. Uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals has a meeting scheduled, it's now scheduled for Wednesday, July fifteenth, three thirty, uh, five-thirty PM, ooh, five-thirty PM, uh, here in the Opera House, and that will be televised and streamed. Uh, they will be discussing, I believe, the, um, request by Schooner Bay for a facility down on Route seventeen, Rockland Street. Upcoming workshops. Uh, the Annual Select Board Goals Workshop is Thursday, July second, four PM at the Town Office. And we will be holding a MUBAC, or Main Uniform Building and Energy Code Education Workshop, on Tuesday, July seventh, also four PM over in the Town Office. And that will include both the Planning Board and the Ordinance Review Committee. This is a joint workshop.
So it's four o'clock? 'Cause you have six-thirty on our schedule.
Oh.
That's why I'm checking.
It's always been four o'clock.
Okay.
I, I-
I think we're at two separate dates.
Yeah.
This one's at four, that one's at six-thirty.
Yes, and the six-thirty one is really at four o'clock.
This one's at four?
Yes.
That, they're both at four?
I, I have too many calendars and I keep making mistakes, and my apology on that.
So that's at four.
They're both four. The Goals Workshop is at four o'clock on the second, and the MUBAC workshop is at four o'clock on the seventh.
That's correct.
And that's at Richardson Room?
Those are both over at the Town Office and the Richardson Room. Moving right ahead, committee openings. The published agenda for tonight showed some of them. Because of reappointments, there are additional ones beyond what were shown on the original published agenda. The Cemetery Committee is gonna have one vacancy. The Conservation Commission will, a committee will have an, one vacancy. Uh, and the Zoning Board of Appeals will move from one to two vacancies. Uh, one person has declined to be reappointed to that. Zoning Board of Appeals is an extremely important committee, and we really need to have them at or near full strength. So please, you know, if you have anybody who might be interested, twist their arm. Don't break it, but just twist it to the point where there, it is to be broken. But, uh, we do need people on that Zoning Board of Appeals because of its judicial requirements. Agenda changes. Oh, oh, do we have any other committee appoint, uh, vacancies that I didn't note here? Didn't think so. Okay, agenda changes. Do we have any changes that we need to make to the agenda tonight before we proceed? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the Board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have anyone that wishes to make public comment this evening on our agenda? Uh, hearing none, let's move to the Town Manager's Report. We, we have?
Yes, you have a copy of Manager's Report. The fire, as you see in my report, the Fire Department has been very busy with grant stuff. They've gotten several grants, including one from Home Depot for a new kitchen, renovations in the fire station, new kitchen, in the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars. Um, they received grants from Maine Cardiovascular Health Council in the amount of thirty- No, that's not, the amount isn't there. But I think it's about twenty-six hundred dollars for two AEDs for two of their first response vehicles. Uh, they received thirteen hundred dollars from Walmart for two iPads to put in to the, again, the, the first response vehicles. And five hundred fifty dollars from FM Global for cases and cell startup services. Um, and we received today, just received today, that they received a safety enhancement grant in the amount of seven hundred and seventy dollars for safety vests and signs for the department. So when there's a traffic accident, that guys that show up, people that show up to help, can get in a safety vest, and we have accident ahead signs. So, uh, the Police Department has received, also received some grants for seatbelts and OUI details, which that's pretty much an ongoing, um, an ongoing detail.
You skipped the part about the new fire truck.
Let's get that one in.
I'm trying to move right along here.
Can we drive by eight-thirty to go over there and see it?
The new fire truck, he's gonna drive by and blow the horn and siren when he gets through. Uh, the new fire truck is due to arrive there down in, I forget where they are. Brunswick picking it up. Uh, there's a, some sort of open house down there where several towns are getting fire trucks all at the same time, so they'll be driving up here and-
Caravan from Wisconsin?
Yeah, so- Yeah, so about eight-thirty, they'll come through and blow the whistle.
Okay.
It'll take, it'll take about a month before it gets into, it really gets into operation into the, into the cycle, because they have, there's a lot of equipment that needs to be installed on it. The way it's designed is, is there's a lot of empty bays in it, you know, it's tool bays. And all those tools are gonna get mounted in place, so that me, that they'll be able to identify when something's missing a lot easier, because it'll all be mounted instead of thrown in a pile in the back of the truck or something. And then also, they need to get everybody trained on the, the pump operations and all of that, and everybody needs to pass a driver's test that are gonna be driving it to, you know, a safety tra- test on it. So it, it could take about a month to get that done. So the Police Department received those two grants, and, and from, in talking to the chief today, the, um, OUI, um, detail is producing, is a little bit ahead of where it was last year, of, uh, stopping more people with OUIs. It's a little bit ahead, but not a whole lot, but a little ahead of last year. Uh, Mike Young has completed the second phase of his supervisor's training. He started that last year. It's a two, uh, two-year program, that it's two and a half days per, uh, per program, and it's through the main chapter of the Public Works Association. Uh, Kerry Lightman was, this is a month of, a couple of months of honoring, uh, different people. Kerry Lightman was honored with an award from the Northeast Regional Assessors Association and assessing officials, um, for his recognition for his hard work and outstanding service in the field of assessing as of, on May eighteenth in Portsmouth. The Public Works Department tricked us. We, we were, we were far too secretive in this award. They were honored with an award from the main chapter of American Public Works Association for the Harbor Lighting Project and the, the, um, the dock, the dock pedestals, the power to the docks. It was, the award was specifically for the, their in-kind, in-house contribution. That's what got them that. And, uh, as Bill knows, we, we, we went up to Skowegen to surprise them at their annual event, and they decided that they had been at the event long enough, and they went and had dinner. They went and had lunch and came back to work. So we drove an hour, what was it?
An hour and a half.
An hour and a half up and an hour and a half back.
And as we were sitting there trying to stay-
Incognito.
Incognito, we see the new Public Works truck, or what we thought. Drive on by us going the other way.
So, you know, no, no good deed goes unpunished, so, um-
The thing we're happy to receive.
Yes, they were happy to receive it, and there was a press release in the paper today, that, that made the paper today with some pictures of them. They do a lot of, they, they're still doing work down there. Um, and also, the Maine Welfare Directors Association recognized Stacy Power for her five years of devoted ser- and exemplary service as the president of the Maine Welfare Directors Association at their annual meeting. The, uh, outboard motor from the Harbor Masters boat, we know, remember, we replaced the Harbor Masters, uh, the outboard motor, motor on the Harbor Masters boat last year. We were able to sell that in a public bid auction, and we sold that for three thousand, six hundred and one dollars and fifty-one cents. So somebody already, and also, the Fire Department, uh, sold the fire truck. That also was a bid process, and that was three thousand, one dollar and ninety-nine cents.
Is that right? I, I would've thought that the whole fire truck would be more, worth more than that.
We tried, we tried to give it away to, um, we tried to give it away to any, to communities that would want it, and nobody wanted it. So that was the bid, yeah. Yeah, the first offer was to the island communities, you know, some of the island communities. Uh, the thought wa- I think that's what happened a time before. Did we give a truck to a? Yeah.
Yeah, one, yeah.
But we couldn't give it away, so, um, we were gonna, the plan was to give it away for a dollar, and, uh, nobody was interested, 'cause it's a nineteen eighty-three, yeah. It's a nineteen eighty-three truck.
That's a good year.
Yeah.
That was the old twenty-five? Twenty-four?
I was born in eighty-four.
Okay, stop it.
Okay, kids.
Yeah, thank you.
Children?
Thank you.
All right, continue.
Uh, so the Keep, uh, if you've been following it, the Keep Rockport Beautiful Event is gonna take place on Friday and Saturday. They, that group has been very, very active and-
It's not this coming Friday and Saturday.
This coming and Friday and Saturday, yep. It's this, this, this Friday and Saturday, yes?
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, you're right.
It's this Friday and Saturday, and they have-
I'm thinking the twenty-seventh is a mon- a week away, over a week away.
They have nearly a hundred volunteers, and they'll be working and picking up litter on streets, eleven streets around town, uh, around Rockport, and it's gonna, most of the activity will take place on Saturday. There's a few groups that are picking up specific streets on Friday afternoon. I think VSTV is one of them, is, is VSTV one of them on Meadow Street? And, uh, so there's a couple streets that are gonna get done on Friday, and then the rest will be done on Saturday. Uh, we're buying, um, because it's gonna be so many volunteers out picking up, up the street, we're buying vests and some signs, uh, caution, uh, road cleanup crew ahead signs.
Can you just get seven hundred and seventy dollars worth of vests?
So, uh, we'll be working on that. The, the goal is that they'll be, that, their hope is to do this twice a year. Once in the spring, right after the snow leaves us, 'cause that's when the roads look the worst, uh, before they, everything starts to grow in. Once everything starts to grow in, it's harder to, you don't see it as much, and it's hard, harder to find. So that's, uh, that, that is gaining momentum.
I plan on being out there along Meadow, along Parks, um, Main Street somewhere.
With the Masons, right? The Masons?
Well, as many of them as I can gather, but yeah.
There's a, there's a bunch of groups that are doing this. Uh, Penn Bay, Penn Bay Hospital has about twenty volunteers, uh, VSTV has a group, the Masons has a group, a bunch of businesses have put together groups. So there's a big effort. Hopefully, the, the media will be out there taking pictures, 'cause this, this is a big event for, for-
I would caution everybody to look out for Poison Ivy.
Yeah.
Yes.
We got a lot.
Yeah, they have pictures that, they have a handout that they give to all the volunteers, and one of the things is, "This is Poison Ivy and this is, uh, Poison Oak." Three leaves, lea- what's the thing? Three leaves, le-
Leaves and tree, leave it be.
There you go, there, you got it. So the Opera House improvements are out to bid, and there was a pre-construction meeting just recently on Friday. All of the potential bidders that were there at the time were really saying that the timeframe that, that we were trying to get it done in was, was too tight. And so they asked for an extension, which we've decided to, to, to do. It gives them a lo- a little bit longer period of time to get their bid in. And then the extension is to the end of October to do the construction, to do the, all of the work. The challenge will be that if the, um, if it gets cold really fast, it'll be hard to paint in October. So it's kind of a gamble that they, you know, that, you know, if it goes faster, they'll get done faster. They're not gonna hang around any longer than they absolutely have to on the job, but that's, that's the goal anyway. So, uh, Gartley and Dorsky has done up the amendments, and those went out. You, you should've gotten that. Oh, did, those went out today, um, this afternoon. Uh, the Mill Bre- Bit, Bridge, the Mill Street Bridge project will not be done this year. I think we've talked about this a little bit. Um, it, it's just way too much permitting. It's, it's in the process now, where we've, we're, we're working our way through the process, but the permitting of that bridge is, is gonna take some time. And there's a very limited construction window, so getting that done in the river or in the stream is impossible for this year. Uh, we've looked into the possibility of, you've heard about the new state grants that are available for culvert work. It's highly unlikely we'll qualify for them, we'll apply, but, uh, it's very unlikely, because the grants are, there's a high priority to given to grants that improve fish habitat, and because of the way the, the pond is, and the culvert from the pond is higher than the stream, there's no ability for us, fish to swim upstream past seventy-five feet where that, um, where the Mill Street Bridge will be, so we're not gonna get any points, and it's, there's a high point value for improving the habitats. So we won't be doing improving the habitat. So it's unlikely we would get it. And then even if we did get it, the improvements we'd have to make in the culvert itself would probably chew up all of the grant that we got, um, to accomplish that. You, you know, the requirements for the culvert would be much higher than the culvert we're gonna put in. So it would go through, if we got ninety thousand dollars, we may spend ninety thousand dollars on changing the culvert to the one that's required by the state to, to, to meet the conditions of the grant.
Then, I'm gonna ask the question, then, why do it?
Well, because people expect us to apply for the grant, I would think, unless you tell me not to bother. I mean, I, I just-
And I, it's your judgment, I think, but it does seem like, you know, if it's gonna take a lot of resources of personnel and time to do it, and the priority of getting it is very low, it seems like the resources could be spent elsewhere, in my opinion.
I think I hear, I, I hear you, okay? I'm okay with that, we have enough, we have enough grant stuff to work on. School and summer street projects, those, those, those roads have been surveyed, the core sampling and everything, that's all been done. From what I understand, the, the, the holdup, the real holdup, if there's any, if the holdup now is figuring out if main water, it needs to do any work in those roads. We don't wanna do, we don't wanna come in and do the roads and then have main water, say, next year, that they, they wanted to replace, uh, water mains. So Mike has been in contact with them, and have we heard back from them yet?
Says no, called me back yet. Heard from him a couple times.
So it may mean delaying. If they say, "We're ready, we'll have the money in next, next year's construction season to do work on this road or that road or both of them," it may mean delaying until they can, they can do their work while we're in digging up the road.
I, I think that if you get the right person at the water company, I think you'll find that about seven years ago, they replaced the main, I think it was right down, uh, School Street-
School Street.
Because they went to the Holmes property where they had a huge amount of water being used. So I think that they've done what they would, I would guess-
Yeah, in seven years.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so, and then we, School Street, do we know anything about School Street?
Both, and this, he, he wasn't sure which one, the work day or-
We have a meeting, Mike and I have a meeting on Wednesday with Will, Will Gartley and, um, and Bill Lane to talk about, again, to talk about the construction schedule for all of these projects on Wednesday at one o'clock.
My concern here is if we delay it a year to accommodate the water company and the prices to do the work increase, who's gonna pick up that change, that difference? We're, we're accommodating them.
Well, yeah, we are to some, to some extent, or they, they'd come in in another year or two and dig up our new road.
They have to pay for the repli-
It'll never, it'll never be the same.
I, I know.
Do they do any cost sharing with us when we open up the road and they come in and do something?
Go ahead.
Uh, so if we open up the road and then they do work, do they do any cost sharing with us when we repave over the top? I mean, they would've had to have paid for that otherwise.
Normally, they'll come in and cut a nice straight trench and- trench, so if we repaved the road, they would kinda trench down it if they had a repair and not resurface.
But no, like when we did Pleasant Street, they did some work along- They shared part of the cost of the fill and paving.
Some of the road work, yes.
So would they do that with us if, you know, if we wait a year so they can go along with us?
Yes, they may.
They do some cost sharing?
They may do that.
The chall- the challenge will be is, is to make it clear to them that if they don't take advantage of this now, we're gonna be very reluctant to give them a road opening and- in two years or three years. And dig into the-
The state does the same thing, what is it, five years, I think.
Right, yeah. So, uh, Mount Pleasant is on its way and that will be completed this, this year. Uh, one of the toughest challenges we have is, engineering wise, is the high sidewalk. That's, that's gonna be the biggest challenge, trying to figure that out, um, because as you, you and I talked, Bill, it's, it's, um, one of the challenges is we don't wanna create a wall that looks like the Home Depot parking lot or the New Jersey thruway going through there. You know, while it's, you know, it's held together with duct tape and sheet rock screws now, um, it certainly doesn't look like the Home Depot entrance, um, into Rockport. So that's gonna be a tough challenge, um, and as far as I know, the West Rockport's fire station and public works roof are pretty straightforward projects and they can proceed at any, at any time. I think, um, I'm not sure, do we know what the holdup is on the West Rockport? We don't? I think it was, right. Uh, the internet survey, uh, is hitting the mail tomorrow, so residents should, uh, four hundred, uh, lucky residents, lucky winners, four hundred lucky winners will get that, that survey on their internet service and whether the, the town should continue to provide wifi, I mean, not wifi, fiber to the rest of the town. That should hit the mail on, um, it's, it's gonna hit the mail tomorrow, so people should start seeing it in their mailbox Wednesday and Thursday. A week after that, we will, uh, announce an online version so that, there's, there's a random survey which the, the numbers are gonna be one thing and then the, the self-selected survey, which will be an online version, that any resident can go to the site once it's announced and take part in that survey.
Who in your office is the appropriate person to, um, reach out to the media to make sure that people know that that's going on?
Yeah, uh, we'll be doing a press release. The other, the other one is, the challenge was, do we do two press releases, one for, um, this one and, and another one to follow, it's whether the press-
I, I think yes.
Yeah, I think so too, I think that people-
Whether the press will do it or not, that's a, that's a challenge. Whether they'll, you know-
I think, I think you'll get a higher response on the four hundred you mail if people know it's coming.
Well, it, it's, they're, they're coming from, and we sent them Town of Rockport envelopes and it comes with a cover letter from me explaining what it is, that it's, um, it's not coming from a, with a Tilson. We offered, I don't know if the other towns did this, but we sent them the four hundred envelopes and a cover letter from me. So, um, well, uh, I mean, I can try that to a, but whether they'll produce, whether they'll do it or not, I don't know.
I mean, the second one is more important. If we're gonna ask everybody to, to fill out an online survey, it's better that they cover that one than cover the first one.
Right, because the first one has a letter, you know, it has a letter, an explanation, it comes on, in town, in a town envelope.
But the results from the first one may actually be more important because it's random.
Right.
You know, the, the second one is self-selected, so, you know, all, all the people who have a really strong opinion one way or the other are gonna respond to that, but the ones who are sort of, eh, you know, they may not and we, we may get some of those on the, on the four hundred, the random one, so.
And I would say you should mention the first one when you send out the second one. Kind of thing.
Right.
You know, for those of you who didn't receive this last week.
There, there was a very conscious decision made to, um, when it was discussed, to doing the second, the online, the, the self-selected online one after the first one went out, so that the, the people that received the first one don't decide, well, they go to the wrong site and fill it out and say, well, that's what I need to do instead of doing the four, the four hundred online, I mean, the four hundred random ones.
The press release should be very clear that some people receive a survey in the mail and they, and we really want them to respond to that.
Okay. The employee biography, who as you announced is taking place this Thursday, um, one thing is that the, as I mentioned previously, Rockport is celebrating its one hundred twenty-fifth birthday on Feb-, in February twenty-fifth, I think it is, or something like that.
Twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, yeah.
Yeah, something like that. And this, this is, is an event that really needs, needs people to help on it and it would be, it would be great if the, the, um, select board could, uh, ask for volunteers and have people, um, send in information that they would like to volunteer for this one hundred and twenty-fifth, uh, interver- uh, birthday party.
Well, one of the things, I mean, knowing a little bit about events and panic and stress until a curtain goes up, um, I think somebody has to have a vision for what it's like, because you can't just say volunteer, volunteer without some sort of over, over vision. So my recommendation would be if the select board is gonna take a large part in this, that we have a workshop almost immediately, um, so we can start to, uh, parse that particular vision because without that, it'll just be a mishmash of, of nonsense. Or we hand it off to somebody else to have, to, for them to have a vision.
Anybody got a vision?
I did, but I was told to be called. I said one hundred and twenty-five free pizzas.
We could fit that into any celebration we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hold on, Rick, let me make a note here.
Okay, okay. It might be seen as bribery otherwise, I guess.
There are several people that have approached me that have expressed interest, um, in, in being part of a group that would help organize and-
Oh, jeez.
One of the suggestions was a big snowball battle between Camden and Rockport at the, at the-
Yeah, 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 at the arch.
At the arch.
That could be fun.
Then done.
So, um, but it just, it's, it needs to start happening now or else it'll be, it'll be on us before we know.
I've, I've got a note that we can schedule that one as well, later tonight.
Is that commitment, uh, for all the various events that would be summertime as well or just for that February one specifically?
It needs, I would think it needs to be the whole, the whole shebang, um, for everything.
Whatever, the steering committee decides. Their committee could decide.
I mean, you could, you could have, you could conceivably design it so that there is one medium, easy to pull off event on that day in February and then a whole bunch of stuff thereafter, say, five months after.
Yep. But that, that's, that's something that a, either the select board could decide or turn that over to a steering committee to decide, come up with a plan. Fundraising, all, the whole thing. So, uh, lastly, I attended the Maine International Trade Day at the Sammaset last month, the Midcoast Magnet at Union Hall, um, down the street, there was a Top Gun Regional Pitch that went very well, was very well attended. Met with Representative Welch, Welch about, uh, upcoming legislation, particularly legislation regarding broadband, because as you know, there were thirty-eight different broadband bills going through the legisla- legislature.
Is that all?
Yep.
Okay.
I think there were thirty-eight different ones. Um, there, it, it came down to two, I think there were two that finally got left in and both of them were watered down with no money attached. Uh, but at least there's a placeholder that if money does come in, the money does become available, that that money can go into that, um, to that bucket, so to speak. Um, there's been a very active group, uh, the Maine Broadband Coalition, which they, they take, they usually have, uh, conference calls on Fridays because there's a big movement going on in the state to, to get, uh, broadband and Rockport's right at the, um, right at the head of that. Uh, I attended a business after hours at Rockport Automotive on Town Meeting Night. Uh, it was pretty interesting, the, the food table and, you know, all the snacks and everything were all on the, um, lift.
As long as nobody fell down under the lift.
I, I suggested that they should make it go up or down very, very slowly. I also, uh, um, welcomed the, the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development, uh, Regional Directors, um, had their annual meeting here at the Sammaset just recently and I welcomed them to Rockport, explained the difference between Rockport and Rockland, because that, when people are in, in, at the Sammaset, they all think they're in Rockland and I tell them that if they go onto the other side of the pool, they're in Rockland, but everything else over here is in Rockport. And then I also spoke on why broadband matters, the, um, thing I've been doing a lot of. Um, and then I also welcomed the Friends of Incoast Maine Building Stronger Communities Event here in Rockport, which the towns, the town sponsored this year, it's the second of, second year of the event, which it brings a lot of people into Rockport that don't normally come here. And I also spoke on, again, why broadband matters.
That was last Thursday, was it?
Yes. And that's my story.
You're sticking to it. Do we have any questions of the town manager on his report?
Just a quick one and a general question on all the infrastructure improvements and the timing of the bonds, are we gonna have to take out some of the bonds this year and some of them next year?
Yes, it's, uh, the, the Opera House one is in the works now.
Right, that was a separate one, yeah.
That's a separate bond. And the other ones, uh, the other bond will be a, uh, a ta- a bond anticipation note. So we'll take that out, but we're not gonna do that until we know we're ready to pull the trigger on getting things going. Uh, but Ginny has already started that work, um, to getting that done and so then it's just a matter of, you know, um, pulling the trigger, like I said, on that. And that's why we're having the meeting on Wednesday, is to nail down, when, when are we gonna need the first amounts of money?
When, when is that meeting on Wednesday?
Uh, I think it's one o'clock, isn't it?
Okay.
I believe it's one.
So the actual bond will not be floated until next year, probably, we'll do the bond anticipation note for what we do this year and then take it all out next year.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
And our, the voter's approval allows us to-
To do that, right.
To do that, okay.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't wanna take it out too early because we wanna make sure we have it the year to do it.
Hopefully the interest rates stay low.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions of the town manager? Then let's move ahead, we have unfinished business. The first is a report from the town manager regarding the moving of the Glencoe Memorial, a veterans memorial, to the rest area.
And you'll, did, did anybody have a chance to go down and look at the locations?
I didn't know. Well, I, I know where, you know, the, the one there is that you go in and then I know where the circle is, but, yeah.
Basically, uh, we haven't, we haven't had any luck in finding anyone that, um, is connected with the, the garden club at this point, I mean, short of taking out an ad in the paper.
This is the Glencoe Garden Club.
The Glencoe Garden Club, right. According to Linda, the, the person that she knew is no longer with us. Um, the only thing, the other thing we could do would be take out an ad in the paper, um, but it doesn't seem as if anybody's real, um, there's, there's a whole lot of, um, interest in it, um, other than the people that would, are in favor of moving it. And you'll see, you see in my background information, there's, there's, um, information from Owen, Owen had done some work, um, and found us the equipment that we need. So it was a surprise to us that the, um, the, the monument will take such a big base. Uh, the, initially we had thought about putting it over where there's like a little, there's, there's a sign, a historic sign of, an older sign of Rockport and there's a couple of benches there and a, a nice spot there, but in order to do the earthwork there, we would destroy that spot because we'd have to dig such a big hole, it would destroy all the plants all around it. So the, 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 um, site would be either, as soon as you drive down the driveway, there's a picnic table right at the bottom of the driveway, it would be in front of that picnic table, or all the way at the other end at where the traffic circle is, in the traffic circle.
Yeah. My opinion is we put it at the closer location to where we, where you see it when you're driving in. Otherwise it's totally hidden and nobody notices it.
And you'd be able to see it from the road, I mean, if you were looking down there.
Does, I, I, I do kinda feel like we should put an ad in the paper to see if there is anybody, I mean, it's kind of our due diligence to say, we, we looked for anybody who still had an interest in this, um.
And are we looking for people by virtue of family connection or are we looking for people who might've been on the, uh, West Rockport Garden Club?
Glencoe.
Glencoe, sorry.
I mean, I would presume it would be anybody who has a connection to this monument, whether it be that it was placed in honor of some family member or if they, uh, were part of a group that put it up. And at the same time, perhaps we ask for, uh, for, uh, support, I guess, in moving it off of a piece of private property onto something that the Town of Rockport, uh, controls. And, you know, maybe somebody wants to volunteer their time, maybe it's something important to somebody that never thought that it was there and we didn't know, they didn't know it was there or hadn't thought about it in ages.
Owen's got, Owen's got, um, who is it, uh, the Rockport-
It's a Rockport Granite, so that's seventy-five dollars an hour, I talked to the owner and he said, for the Town of Rockport, it's on the house, so the, the truck to move it and a driver is free of charge to the town.
Wow. And I'm, I'm assuming Owen will be there to help us.
He'll be there.
Public Works guys will dig the hole, the, the big expense is the concrete, you know, is the, the, forming it up and the concrete.
Mike and I talked about it, it does seem like a, a very large slab the F to pour underneath, but to get down to permafrost for the length and duration of how it's gonna be there, putting that time and effort into getting that slab on good is, is worth it.
That raises the question though, that what other remediation work might we have to do at the current location?
If I may, I've, I've talked with JJ, JJ Snack Shack, so there, the monuments in two pieces, there's the upright that's got the inscription on it and then there's the pedestal that it sits on and then there's whatever's below the pedestal.
And that's what I'm talking about.
Now, when I talked to JJ, I said, look, I don't, I doubt that the town is gonna really wanna do a full excavation of everything and he said, you know, if I can put some top loam, just a top dressing, I, I don't think that my parking lot's gonna get that far. As long as you get it out of here, I'll deal with whatever's below it. That was my understanding from talking with him.
Do you know if the flagpole, is the flagpole, we supposed to move that?
Now, that's the one thing that we haven't figured out is that flagpole. I mean, I don't know. It doesn't say paid for by the Glencoe Garden Club on the flagpole. The assumption is that it comes with it and we have to figure out whatever small bit we put down there for it, but the assumption is the flagpole would come with it.
Is JJ, JJ okay with that?
I can't say that for sure, we haven't, I didn't address that with him specifically.
That needs to be resolved.
And I did go and I cleaned it, I cleaned the whole monument, so where it's moving from a place with a good water source to a place with, I don't know about the water source, I cleaned it there, so we can move it and it should be good for a while.
Okay.
I'll check with him tomorrow on the flagpole.
Okay. Yeah. Speaking of flagpoles, weren't we gonna move the flagpole from the Public Safety down to the Harbor Masters Building and replace it over there, is that still?
Okay.
I, I'm just wondering if maybe we have an extra flagpole running around here that we could, yeah.
I would also make an assumption that JJ-
Not running, but-
Would have that gone as well, that's an assumption.
Yeah.
But I, I have to echo what Tracy said, I think we really do need to do our due diligence to make sure, and have we talked to legal counsel about this at all?
No, I haven't spent any money on legal counsel.
I just, I-
I don't know what we'd say, I mean, unless there's documentation of some sort or thought that there is documentation, if there's nothing on the deed, where else would there be documentation?
I guess that would be the question I would ask, is how do we determine ownership and how do we show that we've done that? Because what we don't wanna have happen is eighteen months down the road, somebody come and say, hey, you moved my money, you didn't have permission to do that, put it back.
When it goes through the permitting process, is that a beginning part of a record?
It's, it wouldn't be-
That was prior to-
Yeah.
Right.
Um, I would say we should probably have somebody at least look at the deed, somebody for the town to look at the deed.
For, for JJ's-
For that piece of property and see if there's anything notated on it.
Didn't I tell you, actually, the neighbor, talk to the neighbor. If you're looking at JJ's Snack Shack and you're looking at the monument, the neighbor directly to the right, the old, I, I'd say old duffer with a lot of affection, I love old duffer. So the old duffer came over and we chatted about it for a while, he apparently has the original brass plaque that was on it and it came off and so they put a new one on, so he may have additional information, I was trying to get it cleaned and I was in a rush, so picking his brain may be useful.
Okay.
I think he's lived there for a long time.
So, is this gonna continue to be, um, unfinished business or are we gonna?
What I'm hearing here is that we still have some due diligence that we need to do.
I would feel better if we had done that before we make the decision.
I think, I think we're in favor of moving it, provided all our bases have been touched.
Does he want it to come back again or if there's no, if, if we get it, if we put an ad in the paper and we get no, nothing and there's nothing on the deed?
I suppose we could put together a mo- I suppose we could put together a motion that included the.
Yeah.
Do you have thoughts on how that motion would be worded?
I'm thinking about it.
I mean, I guess my question is, is do we, is there anything wrong with putting it off for a month? If we put it off for a month and, and nothing comes back, and Rick says, you know, we pulled the deed, we put an ad in the paper ten days ago, and we haven't heard anything, then we can just be done with it and say, you know, we did what we needed to do, and we feel comfortable just saying, do it.
Is that sufficient?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
So I mean, I would make a motion.
That work for you, Mike?
I did easily in October.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I would make, I make a motion to table this.
It's more for JJ's Snack Shack there that, okay, so I'll put that in the paper, and we'll see what we, see if it roasts anything up.
Okay. Tracy made a motion to table.
Okay.
To, to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, or, yeah.
Second.
And seconded by Jeff. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Okay. We'll table to the next meeting. It will reappear as unfinished business. The other unfinished business we had was an update from the Cemetery Committee regarding questions that we raised. My understanding is that they have not been able to meet, and they would wish to have this tabled again.
I thought we had six months to come back with that, because we were gonna review rules again to see what else we need to do.
Okay.
Right. So I would move that we table this item until the Cemetery Committee is prepared to return with updates.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? We have tabled until the committee is ready to come back to us. Public hearing. We now need to move to a public hearing. Actually, I believe this is, well, it's presented to me here. It's two items, but it's for the same location. This is one for a new liquor license for American Flatbread Rockport LLC at 399 Commercial Street in Rockport, and the second is a new special amusement permit for American Flatbread Rockport LLC at 399 Commercial Street. The second one is to be approved pending proof of approval from the state Fire Marshal's office that the building meets code for having dancing at the restaurant. This is, this, and these are my notes here, if this is not received, then it would be approved for music only. So with that, I am going to open the public hearing portion. And the public hearing is gonna consist of me opening the hearing, asking if anyone wishes to speak in favor of the specific license, if anyone wished to speak opposed to, if anyone wishes to speak neither for nor against. And then I will close that portion of the public hearing, and then open the next one, and go through the same process again. Once we've heard all comment, if anyone wishes to make comment, we will close this and move into our new business, which the first item is, is for us to take the votes on these requests. So if that is all clear, I think it is, I'm gonna open this public hearing, and this is in regard to a new liquor license for American Flatbed, Flatbread Rockport LLC at 399 Commercial Street in Rockport. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this liquor license to American Flatbread? Hearing none. I will ask if anyone wishes to speak in opposition to this request. Hearing none. Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against the request for this liquor license? Hearing none, I'm gonna close this portion of the public hearing. I make the time at seven fifty-three, or seven fifty-four, depending on which clock you wish to use, Linda. And then I will open the next public hearing, which is a new special amusement permit for American Flatbread Rockport LLC at 399 Commercial Street. I believe this request includes both dancing and music. With that stated, does anyone wish to speak in favor of this request? Does anyone wish to speak opposed to this request? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this request?
Can I ask the question, do we know if the marshal's approval has been received yet?
It has not been received.
Okay, thank you.
And hearing no further comments, I will close this portion of the public hearing at seven fifty-five. And we are now done with the public hearing component of this, and we will move to new business. And this is to approve the new liquor license and special amusement permit. Since there are conditions with the special amusement permit, I'm going to separate these into two. And the first one will be the approval of a liquor license for American Flatbread Rockport LLC at 399 Commercial Street.
I move to approve a new liquor license and special amusement permit for American Flatbread Rockport LLC at 399 Commercial Street, Rockport, Maine, oh four eight five six. Oh, that's the next.
Yep.
Did I do the wrong part?
I think I wrote it as one.
Yeah, you wrote it all as one. So, okay, I take that all back, and I just wanna move to approve a new liquor license for American Flatbread Rockport LLC, blah, 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 blah.
B L A H B.
Seconded. It's moved and it is seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Can I ask you gentlemen a question?
Sure.
So how many people do you think that you're gonna employ there? I mean, just give me, give me a sense of.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? That's a decent amount of people.
It is, yeah.
But that's not at one time.
It's a lot of part-time.
Mm-hmm, okay. And this is your guys', how many ifs, flatbreads?
There are twelve flatbreads across, they range from Hawaii to Maine, from British, British, Whistler, British Columbia to.
The Antarctic.
They all have a similar look and feel to them.
Sorry, Martha's Vineyard.
Similar look and feel to the inside of them.
Yeah.
Great.
And, and you have interest in them all, or not?
No.
You just franchise them?
We're our first, first franchise of the company.
Oh.
Bobby has been with the company seventeen, eighteen years?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years and managed the Portland Flatbread for fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifteen.
If you guys could actually just introduce yourselves, and then just give a very brief overview of the business.
Come on up those podiums, that would be helpful. People at home to hear.
Sir.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Doug Weber. I live in Auburn, Maine. The past seven years, I owned a liquor, beer, and wine store on Commercial Street in Portland. I was a main state liquor agent. That's where I met Robert Morgan. We became fast friends over the years, and decided we'd like to take the model of the flatbread pizza and find one of the nicest spots along the coast, and get one up and operating. And my motivation is to move from Auburn to the coast, and this is an excellent opportunity, opportunity for me to do so. Secondly, if you have an extra fire engine laying around, we'd be more than happy to take one. They convert excellently into mobile pizza ovens.
I don't think old Rockport engine number one would suit.
I have nothing, I'm Bobby Morgan, and I'll be running the restaurant. Anyone have any questions?
It's still gonna be convention. You can have large-scale conventions or whatever.
That'd be more of Alan's business.
We'll still be running the farmhouse.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the center, working in conjunction with Flatbread.
We'll cater the events if the folks want us to, whoever's having the event.
If you're familiar with the location, which I'm sure everybody is, it's extremely well set up to do just that.
Got great parking, too.
We got great parking. Yeah, I mean, we, we looked, we looked up and down the coast for almost a year, to be perfectly honest, before we made the decision with Rockport.
You plan to be open year-round?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a dearth of pizza opportunities of the winter.
Excellent.
For the consumption of, is what he's saying.
Yeah, at least for the consumption.
Well, I wanted to give a hundred twenty-five free ones away.
Some date in February will take you upon it.
I picked it up at the table, but the other thing was, you know, we can bring a pizza oven over.
You know, there is the holiday on the harbor just before Christmas in December, and we're always looking for business operatives, business people wishing to place their wares down in the harbor park. So you need to talk to Jason over at Rare.
It's a, it is.
And Abby.
A business philosophy of Flatbread to be a part of the community. And it is, there are specific instruction marching orders, if you will, in our franchise agreement to do just that.
I understand that once, one Tuesday every month?
Every, every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday. So like, you know, even.
Some proportion of the.
Raise money for an event for the hundred twenty-fifth anniversary. We could do something like that.
Or other public nonprofit.
Nonprofits.
I've heard of that.
School event, school, you know, lots.
For those that don't know, we, we give a certain amount of each large pizza. The organization comes in, sets up a desk, and the entrance to the restaurant, and then every pizza soul that evening, a portion of that pizza goes to the organization. And we do that every Tuesday.
Can I ask one other question, gentlemen? The sourcing of your food product, is there, is there ability to try to source locally, or?
That's our, that's our philosophy.
Cool.
Yeah, as much local produce as we can, organic as possible. You know, it's tough in the winter, but we still, we're looking for some greenhouses now that will try to produce us greens right through the winter.
But it is, the focus is on local supply.
Great.
Other questions on the?
On the table.
No further discussion? I will call for the vote on the approval of the new liquor license. All in favor? That is unanimous. The second part is on the special amusement permit, which the request was for both dancing and music. The dancing component is predicated on state fire marshal approval of the building to meeting code for that event. So I would entertain a motion and figure out how we want to word this one.
I move to approve a new special amusement permit for American Flatbread Rockport LLC at 399 Commercial Street, Rockport, Maine, oh four eight five six, subject to the approval from the Fire Marshal's office on the dance portion of the special amusement permit. Is that good?
That's good.
Do we have a second?
Second that. And your motion is not clear what happens. If the whole entire motion is subject to the dance portion, if they don't get that, the whole motion goes down.
Yeah, that is how it was, that is how it's written.
So the second would be happy to back out and advise the.
Okay, so I'll back my motion out, and how should we do this? Subject.
Well, let me ask a question before we make any motions. Do we have to, do we have to have another, once the fire marshal approval comes through, do we have to have another public hearing and go through that process again?
No.
No, we can make a contingency plan.
Provided we do the wording correctly here.
Can I just explain now? You know, we're not a dance venue whatsoever. We will do music a couple nights a month, probably.
Okay.
And really, dancing isn't even really a part of it, but, you know, we kind of thought that maybe.
I'd get up and dance.
Doug might get up and dance, but it's really, it's not really, you know, we do local, local music, and it's not a big aspect of ours.
What we're, what we're trying to do is, is come up with a wording that allows you to do music if the fire marshal says no dancing. So that's why we're parsing it out and separating the two, so that you don't have to come back to us. So that, the way the motion was read, you wouldn't be able to do music if for some reason the fire marshal said, no, no dancing.
Right.
So we're, we're trying to get you.
Tracy's working on it here.
So if we go through the whole thing and just say, the motion is for music only, and then as a second phrase, for the dancing portion, the dancing portion would be subject to approval to, from the state fire marshals. Would that work?
That's what you're doing, yeah.
Yes.
So if I say, move, I move to approve a new special amusement permit for American Flatbread Rockport LLC at 399 Commercial Street, Rockport, Maine, oh four eight five six, for music only. For the dancing portion, it is subject to approval from the Fire Marshal's office of, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that good?
And, and let's just say, and to approve the dancing portion, subject to, if you say.
Approve the dancing portion, subject to.
Right.
Approval by the state fire marshal.
Yeah, at such a time that it's approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are you good, Linda?
Yeah.
Okay.
The gist here is that we approve of the music, and if the fire marshal approves, dancing can also be, these are sort of the.
Right.
The background information that you always get at the legislature, that.
To make sure we did the right thing.
So, okay, do we have any further discussion on that?
Mayday.
Hearing none. All in favor of that motion? We are unanimous on that.
Excellent.
Okay, good.
Welcome.
Welcome to town.
And you're still aiming for July one?
Four.
Oh, July four?
We picked it all the way back three days.
Okay.
Okay.
July four is good, too?
Yeah.
All right. The next item we have here, I need now to move to the next. We have some gifts that have been made to the town that we would like to acknowledge. The first one is from Christina M. Pergini. I figured it all out this afternoon. Pergini, a fifty-dollar gift to the Rockport Police Department, which I understand is being used for training and equipment, and a gift from Rock Knack Yacht Sales for five hundred dollars to the Rockport Harbor. We have copies of the checks in front of us. I believe that this, these are well-intentioned gifts, and that we should approve them.
I move to accept those donations with thank you letters sent.
Second, second.
It's moved and it's seconded. Any further discussion?
It's very nice of people to think of things in our town that need to be taken care of. And fifty dollars can go a long way in the right hands, taking care of business. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I.
Five hundred can go.
Yeah. I understand that this, Ms. Christina has also made an equivalent gift to the fire department's five oh one C three that they have organized, that they have, it's separate from the town, but she's also made the gift to them as well. So she's very.
It's very thoughtful.
Very thoughtful, and we really appreciate that. So all in favor of accepting and acknowledging these gifts? That is unanimous. Committee resignations. We have two resignations before us tonight. The first one is from Sarah Price, resigning from the planning board. We have that in front of us. The second one is Owen's, effective resignation from the pathways since he was elected.
I didn't like him anyway.
You didn't like, okay, well, maybe we'll have to make him a liaison.
Wait some of them are here.
Well, in any case.
Yeah, I'm gonna be liaison to it anyways, it doesn't matter. I'll still see you.
Because of his election, he can no longer serve on those committees, but he can liaison with them if he wishes. So with that, I would entertain a motion to accept their resignations. Actually, we could have two.
Move to accept the resignation of Sarah Price from the planning board with regret, and to send her a letter of thanks.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Okay, the second one?
Move to accept the resignation of Owen Cassas from the Camden Rockport Pathways Committee due to his election to the select board.
Second.
We don't actually have his written resignation. We just assumed. It had to be because he got, yeah. No, he's here, he's gonna get the real hard work now, so. All in favor? It's unanimous to include Owen.
Yeah.
We have, well, it's listed under committee application. Last month, we appointed Aaron Brannard as a alternate member to the pathways committee. Now that there's an opening, we can elevate her to a full-paid member of the pathways committee with a massive increase in her compensation of exactly whatever it wants to be, because time zero is still zero. But she has indicated that she's bummer about the raise, but yes, she's happily to be a, moved to be a regular member. a, move to be a regular member, so I would entertain a motion to do that.
I move to approve the member status of Aaron Brannard from an alternate member to a regular member of the Camden-Rockport Pathways Committee with a term expiration of June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor? That's unanimous. Now we'll move on to some of the others. We have a request from the owners of the Heron to sell ice cream and Italian ice from the main, from the Marine Park Pier. They have done this in the past. I don't believe they're here tonight because I told them that this is a renewal of a previous one. We do have information from, oh, there it is, from, oh, I thought I had one from Abby saying that she was very happy to see them.
Thumbs up from the back.
That they're, but, yeah, she is in the back.
How recently in the past was that?
They skipped a year last year.
They skipped a year.
No, they were here.
They were two years ago. So they didn't do a year prior to last year, but they did do it last year.
Yeah. How do I always miss out on this?
I live here, and they have one small sign-
Yeah.
Not very big.
And they're starting making homemade ice cream now, so.
Oh, okay. Cause they go down there frequently.
Rockport theme flavors.
And it all has Rockport, uh, Rockport themes.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I have been told that people really like it.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I understand that you're trying to be kind and wonderful and not waste the time with these other people, but I would think that we would just want to see everybody even renewals. I, it would, it just feels better to me to have that opportunity to, A, if nothing else, give them more exposure, and B, just to have them here for questions, cause a pro-pharma sort of rolling over of, of a permit can just lead to laziness. I invite, I invite the reaction from my colleagues on this matter, but, you know, were you not to, were you have to excuse them and then not announced it to us, you know, it would, it would feel not good to me, but now that you explained it.
If, if they didn't need to appear before us, if they just had to fill out a form and drop it off at the office, that's one thing, but if we are going to continue to keep things like this at a level where it comes to us, then I do think that, that we should, they should make an appearance, or we should make a different decision about the importance of this sort of an application.
Okay.
Not that, I mean, obviously, if Bill told you not to be here, don't worry, but I think in the future, we should think about that, and it might also be nice to have the original application, cause in the past, there was a whole packet that we would get for whatever it was, a peddler's application or whatever. So even if they don't have to file a new one each time, it'd be nice to have a copy of the old one-
Right.
So that we would know what, you know, what the parameters are that we're working-
And salient to that matter, sometimes the board in different iterations would, would notate on the original thing some sense of limitation.
Okay.
Right.
So that, it gets reiterated year after year by doing that.
With, I, I understand, yeah, I'm perfectly happy to abide by that, it was a will of the board. We do have other, I think called iterant peddlers.
Itinerant.
Itinerant. Dads down on Route One by Glencoe being one of them, those are just approved by the-
I don't think he's ever come before.
Okay, so why, why does this one come before us rather than-
Well, because that's on-
The Habba.
That's on a road, a state road, but within the town. This is on town property.
Okay, so it's-
And that's why I'm assuming that it's coming before us.
I don't know. That's, I mean, that's a good question.
Because it is, they're, they're requesting to use town property for personal gain.
Okay, I mean, just like Fox on the Run.
Just like the Fox on the Run.
Right, but I think they had a, wasn't there some sort of an application they had?
Yes, oh, yeah.
I thought it was a form that I remember seeing, I have no idea what it said, but, so it would just be nice to see that, to know that all of the information is in place, and that would also mean that, you know, the town would be assured that insurance was taken care of and all of that, and that would obviously need to be updated from year to year.
Okay.
Points well taken. I'm wondering where we know this applicant, and given if we put it off a month, that's gonna cost them a chunk of business.
Oh, no, 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 I wouldn't suggest-
Yeah, I would just say that-
I'm fine with that, I just brought it up as a procedure.
If there are, if there is paperwork that Rick needs, like for insurance or whatever, that I would-
Right.
It should be, it should have been in there.
Is it stated anywhere that it is a requirement for the applicant to present themselves in front of the select board? I mean, I know it's kind of like a, maybe an unwritten rule, like Flatbread just came in.
Because they're doing, well, they're doing business on town property. Flatbread is doing business on private property. So it's a separate, and they're requesting a liquor license as part of their business, which we have to-
Was Flatbread required to come in and present themselves?
Absolutely.
For a new liquor license, yes.
Or even for renewals.
It's a, it's a public hearing.
No.
Not renewals unless the chief has an issue, but.
I mean, but they wouldn't have to be here.
No, they're not required.
They're not required to be here, but they are here so we can ask them questions, and they obviously want to get it taken care of.
Yeah, and if they, if they weren't here and couldn't answer their questions, we might not approve.
And I would guess that Bonnie would have been here if, if we would have asked her to be here. I don't, I don't think there's any problem with that. I think it's more of an ongoing thought of how we want to do this in the future.
And I've got it noted.
So I don't have it in front of you, but I would-
I'll move to approve the request of the Heron to sell ice cream and Italian ice from the Marine Park Pier, and I'm gonna add for the summer two thousand and fifteen season to the motion.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just that, I think, man, maybe this is a harbor committee thing, but I think at some point, we have the food truck and we have them selling things. At some point, you know, if it gets really popular, we may have a lot of people down there, so we probably need to think about a policy just in general for how we're gonna handle it.
Actually, I was gonna suggest exactly along that line, but include the parks committee, because it's a park, it's a public park, and it may, you know-
Hang on, hang on. Downshift. The harbor, the Marine Park does not fall under the province of the, of the park committee.
It does.
See, and here's where, I'm here, yes it does, no it doesn't, yes it does, no it doesn't.
So let us, let us clarify that.
Yeah.
We've been wasting a lot of time if it doesn't.
Owen, you, I saw you wanted to move-
My question was just, were they tapping into electricity to keep the ice cream cold? And is the town, is that a, is that a cost to the town?
Right, on the, the flow, on the pier, there's a one-ten outlet, and that's something they do pay, the Heron pays for power. Someone that was coming in and didn't already have a power fee wrapped in, like Fox on the Run, for example, pays pretty much exactly what we figured out what the usage was, what they, what they used for power.
Okay.
And we figure, you know, on top of the fee, monthly fee they're already paying for power is wrapped in. But if it was somebody new that didn't also have that fee involved, we would charge them for what their usage of power.
Gotcha.
And if you want me to do that, we can do that. Yeah.
Okay, well, we have the motion, and let's deal with the motion first, and then let's get into the larger discussion. So the motion is to approve their request. Do we have any further discussion on the approval of the request? Hearing none. All in favor? It passes? Now, we've got, as Ken raised, the issue of what happens when the next one comes in, and do we, we don't have a policy for figuring out, you know, how, you know, wins too many, too many.
Right.
And what happens if somebody wants to come along and put up something out at Mars Jones Rec Field, or down at Walker Park, or down at Glencoe? And how do we, where do we go for advice?
You're not gonna answer that tonight.
No, but I think it's-
If I look at, I, I have myself a note to, to pull together some policies and make, and that would be something else you'd, you'd wanna work, do on a workshop.
Yeah.
Pull together some policies, like, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, I think, Rockland deals with that, Camden deals with it.
Yeah, and I, I suggested having the parks committee involved, because other parks could be improved, involved in this. Obviously, in this case, the harbor committee, if they, you know, have or indicate control of the harbor park, they need to be, because there's two sides of the park as well. There's the commercial side as well as the recreational side, so I think we need to make sure we have all interested parties involved in that. So, are we good with that? Okay, when do you think you could come back to us on that?
It'll take, it'll, it's not gonna be something I can produce over, you know-
Not before July?
No.
Okay.
I think you're gonna, you're looking at something for next year.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I just, we don't wanna get ourselves in a position where, you know, somebody comes to us and says, "Well, you approved them, and you approved them, how come you won't approve me?" We wanna have a policy in place saying, for example, and just pulling a number out of a hat, we'll allow up to four establishments at the harbor park to sell food, whatever it might be.
And don't take that as a quote.
No.
Okay.
Purely hypothetical.
There are those people that think we shouldn't be doing any, you know?
And, again, we could hear from them.
Right.
All right. The next item is, we wanna have a discussion on parking ideas on, around the library. About a month ago, I think it was actually, maybe not quite that, you had laid out some proposals for how to maybe add additional parking spaces on Lime Rock by, one, making it one way, and the other is to make angle in and taking part of Memorial Park. In addition, there were some ideas about how to limit parking immediately in front of the library, and increasing a couple more spaces along Russell Avenue. I, I think, you know, because a number of people have raised the question about, whoa, what's going on? We're paving over Park, you know, Joni Mitchell's old song, I think it was, you pave over Paradise, made it a parking lot, well, whatever it is. But I think it's, you know, a good idea to get it out as to what the intent was, and where we're going, and what has already been accomplished, so.
Yeah.
Rick, I'd like to turn it to you right now.
It, it's almost taken on a life of its own. Mike and I were basically talking about how, you know, what we could do to help with the library parking, and one of the, one of the pieces was, which we've already done, which is paving the area where people park illegally now, and removing the no parking sign that's bent over and nobody pays attention to anyways, and make it a safe place to park in front of the library. We have a new railing coming because of that, where the stream comes through, there's a pretty good drop-off, you'll see there's a cone there now, but that creates two more parking spaces there. And in the process of talking about that, Mike had suggested to me at the time, he said, "Well, you know, we could create," cause it's been discussed a number of times, create some angled-in parking over along Lime Rock Street, make that a one-way, one-way street. I was not crazy about the idea, mainly cause I, you know, once you cut down a tree that's a hundred years old, it's, it's not gonna grow back up overnight. You know, as a result of the big, the storm in November, October, November, it took down one of the trees, which broke off. This, this tree that's there is, is cabled together, and all of the arborists and people that know about trees say that that tree's gonna come down, it's gonna fall down anyways. It's old and ready to go. I say I'm old and ready to go, but I'm hoping somebody doesn't chop me down before my time.
Dan still did it.
Right. I, I, I don't like cutting down trees, particularly old trees, that, just because they're old, but if it would help the parking, you know, I said, "Let's, let's mark it out and see what people say." My, my expectation was people would be upset about losing the tree, and it generated a lot of interest from a lot of people on a lot of different fronts. So it was, what, would they, I didn't, I didn't use the word tactical urbanism that they used in Camden when they developed that piece in the front, but it's just, it just marks it out, shows people what it could look like, and, you know, the fact of the matter is, I'm not recommending we do anything at this point. There's enough, enough people that have opinions on all sides. We have improved the parking in the front of the library, and the plan is to mark out two spaces directly in front as twenty-minute parking, and then, and start marking some of the spaces as two-hour parking, so that people don't sit there and park all day in the same spot and take up valuable spaces in, in and around the library. We can have the discussion about what to do with Lime Rock Street and additional parking as we move through the process of the library, what's gonna happen with the library over the next, over the coming months and a year. So I, it was just a demonstration project really for me, and for, and I'm not recommending moving forward with anything at this point.
Okay. Chief?
I was just curious, because I remember asking about any conversations or plans, and I was told that there hadn't been any of yet, and I'm hearing now that there's been conversations, so I would like to be in the loop, I guess, as far as parking and plans.
You've been in department head meetings.
Well, May eleventh, we hadn't heard anything.
Well, no, we got it.
There's no plan, there's no plan.
It sounded like there had been other onsite looks with being on the ground.
The fact that we looked at something doesn't make it a plan. The fact that we talked about something, an idea, doesn't make it a plan. It's, it's just an idea, we marked it out.
I didn't know that, sorry.
Okay. Having, you know, seeing the other trees that there, particularly the one that split off-
Right.
When they start to weaken in the crotch, that rot develops down in there, and I've seen other trees that, eventually they just fall apart. Yeah, we've got the cabling that holds them apart, but the rot is still dropping down in there. So, you know, I'm, I'm sore surprised they didn't, it didn't fall. Owen, you wish to say?
Mr. Jackson, with the canopy, didn't you speak recently about canopy projects and bringing in new?
Yeah.
What would the removal or the keeping of this tree do to your canopy plan?
Well, I got two or three things to say about this. As chairman of the Parks Committee, by the way, to digress just a moment, Harbor Park has quite a lot of green space and a number of trees, and so we have been involved definitely with Harbor Park, and would expect to continue to be involved. I think the harbor committee is more involved with things that are afloat, which we are not, I think they can work here in partnership quite well. The Parks Committee did meet on May twelfth, and we talked about this in a indoor meeting at the town office, and then we went over and looked at the markings, and we realized that this is a, just a promo type, or a, a-
Preliminary.
Preliminary test, drawing, excuse me. And, but we not only don't like the idea of taking down the tree, although we realize that trees have useful life and that it can be exceeded, but it's not that so much, but we do object to encroachment on the park. And so said, and so stated in a motion that passed unanimously by all of the members of the Parks Committee and the three garden committee members who were attending as, as guests, more than guests, they worked with us. So I think it's useful to get that on the record, that we really don't wanna see any encroachment in that park. As to the safety and wisdom of creating angled parking, diagonal, diagonal parking in that congested area, that's somebody else's purview, but we couldn't refrain from commenting that we didn't think it was a very good idea. So, any questions?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Sure.
Does, does anyone else wish to?
Yeah, I'm curious. Is it the angle?
Would you might step up here and giving us your name?
I'm Eliza Hazelton. I'm the Pathways Committee, even though I've just got elected to the Library Committee. No, I'm just curious where the staff parks for the library, cause I used to see cars that I would recognize, like Jane Babbitt's car is, was a recognizable, and she'd park kind of right on Lime Rock, and that it'd be nice if the staff had a secure, nice, great place to park that was an easy walk, like down behind Shepherd's Pie, or, I don't know, just wondering if-
I just, they do, they do park mostly, I think they park down, be, down in the parking lot behind, behind here.
Yeah.
Which, they did pretty much all winter, I think, with, I think, I commend them for that, and, but I told them that it's nice that they park down there, but in the wintertime, but in the wintertime, particularly at night, we don't shovel a walkway up through the snow.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was not necessary for them to do that in the winter. But they continued, most of the staff continued to do that all winter long, correct, pretty much?
Yes, it was primarily to provide enough access for our patrons. Because if we're parking there and as we know, overrun, we've had slips and it's just easier if we moved our cars.
But also to make sure that the, particularly the wintertime, that the people that are there till 8 o'clock at night, when it's dark, when they're leaving, that they, they park closer. But I know Ann has been working, trying to, to, to get the library staff not to park so close to the library so that it frees up spaces near the library.
Right. Well, that's a, that's a good shift. And I, yeah, and I think it definitely should be limited time. I think that's, makes sense, hour-long or two-hour parking and 20 minutes, you know, yeah.
Most, I believe most people, when you put a 20-minute parking space, realize that it's not a space that you're supposed to sit there all day or for a long period of time. And it's going to be out there monitoring and saying, "Well, you've been out there 26 minutes. You're going to get a ticket now." But if you're parking there all day, you're liable to get one.
Yeah.
Which that, that has happened in the past, I believe, Ann. People parked in front of the library and leave their car there all day.
Owen, you wish to?
Just had a quick question. From your observation, because I spent a little bit of time at the Camden Library, do people stop on Lime Rock, get out, run up, put their book in, and maybe get lost in a quick conversation and then finally realize their car's parked in the road? Because I watched that, I don't know how many times at Camden, and people would stop up traffic. I just didn't know if that was something that happens.
Well, in Lime Rock, just because of the streets, it's very easy for, there's a number of issues on that street. One is just the granite siding where people can't park too close because they will pop their tires.
Ann?
People have a tendency to park out into the street and it is narrow.
I think they want you up at the mic.
Were you thinking more of?
No, I think they want you up at the mic.
Yeah, it's just, it's just that for recording purposes, what have you, that's much, much cleaner and clearer.
Sorry. Asking questions, Ann making a move.
Well, now, you were asking about double parking?
I'm, I'm wondering if a 20-minute parking spot would help mitigate something that she may observer, observe with people parking in, simply to drop off a book.
Well, it's, it's hard for us to know exactly because we have two entrances. So we don't really know if they're just doing drop-offs. You know, I have a tendency to think that people who are coming through the back ramp and what I consider our back door are people who are going to be there for longer periods. People like to park on Lime Rock and so we have people in their variety, variety of programs. And so it's not usually just a drop-off. The people who come up the stairs, leaping, bounding, dropping off books and locking back down. I think that's a perfectly appropriate place to have a 20-minute parking area, not so much on Lime Rock. But I hope that answers your question.
And you do a lot of interlibrary loan where people just come in, grab the book and, and leave?
We do. We also have the trucks that are making those deliveries on Lime Rock. So, I mean, there's a lot of congestion there. I'm just saying it's not the best area for parking per se. Plus, we have.
Yep. Can you want to?
Just a quick comment on a couple of things. First, because we haven't yet heard from the study on the, the library facility, I don't think we want to do anything that's terribly permanent based on what may be happening on that site in the next six months, year, two years, whatever. And secondly, I need to point out that the land that is called Memorial Park right now is given to the town for the purpose of a library or a fire station. That's, that's indeed for that particular piece of property. So, while I certainly appreciate, I don't want to pay over the whole park or anything like that, but we do have to keep in mind that that, that land was given for library use. So at some point, and perhaps it comes along with a redesign and makes the park nicer and something like that. So I think we have to keep that in mind.
David, you wanted to?
Couple of comments. Can I just say in a friendly way that be careful because I may, and, and Owen may rally all the veterans. It doesn't matter what the origins of the gift were.
I'm not suggesting that we eliminate the veterans' memorials, but I'm, in fact, I'm, there are possibilities to possibly enhance them, I think.
I'm just joking. I can just clarify the situation with the Camden Public Library parking for, for what it's worth in this situation. And Owen is, is quite right. Having worked there, he sees what's going on, just like I do. There is a loading zone and a lot of people with yellow stripes, a lot of people use that to park, leave the motor running and drop books off in a slot. They don't go in the door. In fact, most, most of this is going on off-hours. There are some people who live park right in the middle of the street, leave the door, the motor running and the door open and drop books off in the slot. It probably takes, you know, a minute or two. It is a nuisance if you're behind them. But, and that, you know, shouldn't happen, but that's what does happen there. I don't see the equivalent in Rockport. I don't see how that, that could happen, could it?
Well, it's also, that street is one-way on Atlantic Avenue in front of the, so it's a, it's a little different.
It is different.
Yeah.
Oh. Please. Sorry, I didn't notice you waving your hand.
Oh, I never say anything anyway, so you probably don't even notice. But I just worry about the street in general because as, I know you were saying that you don't want to do it one way, but having driven down the street and having people come up the street and having it be wintertime and having cute little children running across the street, not checking either way, I worry that if I can't stop because it's icy, that I'm going to hurt someone.
I didn't, I think consideration of, consideration at the right time of making it one way makes a lot of sense because it would clean up that intersection. Instead of having a bunch of different cars coming in a bunch of different ways, you can eliminate one of them, making it one way up the hill. But that's, I think that's a discussion for another time. I think we're, we're, we're spending a lot on something that really isn't a plan. You know, there's been a lot of effort gone into, a lot of effort gone into something that's, it was a demonstration that Mike just picked it up.
We needed to make it clear as that this was only an idea. So.
Just by two cents.
Thank you. So with that, we now have, I hope we now have the air cleared on this and that there's nothing, no paving except for those little parking places, you know, on Russell is, is going to happen. So. With that, let's move ahead. Now, we have here before us approval of the electric fees for overnight dockage at the harbor. We have been presented with a recommendation from the Harbor Committee via our harbor master, which I have been informed now is one word, not two. But it is for a $10 per night fee for 30 amp hour and $20 for 50 amp hour per night, which apparently is the same that is charged north and south of us. With that, and we do have the revised fee schedule.
I move to approve the electrical fees for overnight dockage at the harbor.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
I had a brief question, if I may. I'm sorry, I'm the question guy. Nobody ever does it where there's a ticker and you plug in and what you, what you soak up, you pay for.
Looking at a meter situation and the expense of putting in a meter.
Figured.
And then, you know, administrate, administering that was just.
Figured that's what you were going to say, but it's just one of those things, like if, if it's a big enough boat, can they suck up more than $20 worth of electricity in a night? Battery banks or something like that?
And they may end up putting big boats actually use what's called refays or sort of power. But they often have really quiet generators that, you know, they're not going to be looking to plug into our 50 amp. And if they do, they may need to plug into two, so we'll charge them $40.
Great. Thank you. And I did a quick math and this is, you know, for 50 amp and I've got more than that at home. And this is per month, way more than I'm paying. So, you know. This is obviously, you know, in my opinion, covering our costs.
Very typical.
Right.
Yeah.
The way you'd see that, Owen, is in a marina that had year-round, you know, occupancy. Liver boards, they would put meters in that would register how much power they, they use. But in, in this type of transient situation, it's, it's absolutely correct that the cost of doing that is, exceeds what you make.
We have the motion on the table. It has been seconded. Any further discussion? Comments? Hearing now a call for vote. All in favor of these charges? That is unanimous. The next item, this is a request by the town manager to utilize funds from the harbor master engine and hull reserve to complete the piling work. We have that memo before us.
Which is a very long and lengthy memo. But basically, the whole thing is, is that if Prok is going to be here, it doesn't make sense to have them drill two holes. They might as well drill four holes and get it all done all at once. What we'll be, essentially be doing is borrowing money from ourselves, from the reserve funds, to get this done rather than if we had them come back and do it again, we'd have to pay the $10,000, additional $10,000 mobilization fee. It's not what we planned, but in, this, kind of the sidebar to this is that as, as money was, we have to assign certain amounts of money to certain parts of the project. We're able to build, we were able to put in another dolphin and we'll be building another float will, which will actually give us 120 feet of float space when we were only planning on 100. So that will be, put us in a better, you know, so we'll have 320 feet of float space?
Right, for recreationals.
Right, on, on that side of the harbor. So we'll actually be better off. We're just doing the work quicker than we had expected. The plan is also, we just bought the boat engine, so we, you know, we don't need that money that's there right now. And then also, we don't, there's no plan to buy a new, a new Andre at the present time.
Just a quick, how's it going? I think my memo has, says that it's.
Abby Leonard, Harbor Master. I think my memo says something about using, I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page. It's the float reserve fund that we talked about overdrafting. And I think on yours, it says the engine and the hull. Just want to make sure that you accept it's the same one. I mean, if, if it needs to be specific about which reserve account we're taking it from, my memo says float reserve account, that we just overdraw that and then replenish it with a, and I think that your minutes, your, your agenda says something about hull.
Yes. The first one is the one that Ginny's, Ginny had recommended, the, the motion is to just over, because one of the challenges is making sure that we, we charge the right account with the right amount so that in the future, we can say, "How much did this cost?" And so we'd overdraw and for this year, overdraw the float reserve to the, whatever extent necessary it takes to get the job done with the idea that we'll be replenishing it in the future.
I would, I would rather do that than, than take out of the engine funding because the whole idea of an engine set aside is that it's regular, it anticipates an engine on a schedule and.
But it, I mean, essentially, that's what we're doing. When we overdraw it, we've got to take it from, it's going to come from someplace. It's not my, it's, 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 it's a reserve account and it has different parts of it. We're just going to spend more out of this one and the money will go back in and we'll replenish it next year.
I just didn't want to get in the situation where, you know, you say it and we go to spend it. And we're like, whoa, we didn't approve that particular reserve account.
Right. Well, I think Jeff's point is a good one in that these reserve accounts are established for specific purposes. And I think we, we start down a slippery slope if we start violating that, in my opinion. So I, I like the idea of overdrawing it better, although I have to say, you know, we can say we're going to replenish it, but we're not, you know, we can't commit the town or anything like that to do it.
We can't commit the town. We can obligate ourselves to proposing it in the budget. The town can vote it down.
Right.
But we can obligate ourselves for the duration of this year, but only for the duration of this year. We cannot obligate a future board, a one that would take effect, take, charge a year from now.
Right.
If I made myself clear on that.
Well, we can, but I, by the same token, as we get into the budget process next April, you know, I don't, I don't think we can take a vote now, for example, to commit ourselves to something in the budget next April.
Right. No, you can't. But, but you, what you're doing with the motion is you're cre, you're creating the record that that was, that's the intent.
I will put it in my budget right coming up. And you can.
I mean, I, the idea makes sense, but I, I think we have to be really careful how we word these motions.
Okay.
I, I would be a little, I would be very leery if, if we were saying we were, wanted to take the reserve funds from the fire department truck to do this. But this is all harbor improvement stuff.
We have a new engine, so we're.
I mean, I, I wouldn't be recommending.
Okay. I've, I've heard what we are concerned with here. The request is to transfer money to complete the pilings. As.
The request is to overexpend.
To overexpend. And, you know, it's appropriate that he has come to us. Technically, he could have expended it anyway, but this is something that really needed, you know, he and I discussed it and we really wanted to bring it to the board. So it was a public matter, so we could discuss it in public and take a public vote on it. So we're on record.
And part of the reality is, is if we say no, if we say you can't overextend that line, then we're talking about paying another $10,000 to have Prok come back next year to do something that they're already coming, going to be here to do. So basically, then instead of just being an $8,000 overrun, it would be an $18,000 overrun. And if we, if we can do it and still stay within the parameters that we need to stay within for budget, it seems like a smart thing to do.
Well, I, I'm going to make the motion, but I'm not going to make it until I tell you what I'm going to make the motion of. But I'm going to make the motion that we, at, in a minute, unless somebody vehemently objects, that we use just the float reserve fund and that the motion will include the wording that, that will most likely be overdrawn. And I'm going to leave out that last sentence about, you know, be paid back during FY '16, '17 municipal budget year.
You, you don't think that's enforceable?
I, I, yeah, I don't, I mean, we know what the intent is. Abby's going to put it in their budget. But I think to vote on something like that now when we're not in budget season is a bad precedent as well. So unless somebody, she, you know, the object.
Quick one. Can it be allocated for $7,500 because Rocknak just gave 500? Or does that, is that a shell game of different accounts and it's just?
Different account. The reserve account is a separate account.
Okay.
And I'm planning on taking that 500 anyway to bottom line anyway. I don't have a specific because I know there's been some overages in some of the projects we're doing. That is not going to go to something specific. It's going to go to offset the bottom line. So.
So I'll make the motion that I move from the harbor float reserve ledger account G-2-3850-00 to be expended to the extent necessary to complete the harbor piling replacement project in the current calendar year with the acknowledgement that the reserve fund will most likely be overdrawn.
Second.
Second.
It's moved. It was seconded by Tracy. Do we have further discussion at this point or comments?
Well, I think it's good that they got Prok, that you got Prok to come, that they're coming back. You're not going to charge us to come back.
Absolutely makes all the sense in the world. We just have to make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's correctly.
Yeah.
All right. No further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of this motion? That is approved. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you very much.
Now, let's see. Where are we here? Okay. We're almost to the two-hour mark. Do we wish to take a, a brief break at this point? Or do we want to just charge? Okay. Well, we're no longer governed by the duration of the DVD, CD, whatever it is that we tape this on.
Reel-to-reel.
But we're going to take a five-minute break. Bill, I don't understand what "I" is.
Well, I had to talk to the chief about being solicited at Glencoe.
We up and running?
Didn't even want to know.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Okay, we're back in session here. Our next item is liaison assignments for the year. Trace, Stacy had handed out the blank sheet. I had taken the opportunity, and I think I communicated to most of you, I think, with some suggestions as to what I think would be appropriate for this coming year. It's a two-page, you know, I handed out, it's in color, the backside lists the, you know, who gets what as per person. And I was just gonna throw that out as, as, you know, a recommendation. Obviously, we have to fill in from where Charlton is no longer here. And to go through it, I, I was gonna ask that Tracy, if you could be on both the ad hoc, ad hoc quality, water quality committee and conservation commission?
But don't they meet, don't they meet one morning of the week? Isn't it like Friday mornings or something like that?
Yes, I think they meet like at eight o'clock on Friday morning.
And I think that's why I couldn't do it, because I have to be at work at 8:30 on Fridays.
Oh. Maybe you can convince them to move it to another day.
Yeah, sure, uh-huh, just like ORC. We got them from seven o'clock to eight o'clock in the morning, at least. But, um, yeah, that would be, that would be my issue with that, just because I, Fridays, Wednesdays and Fridays, as far as I know, I'm still booked in the morning.
Do you think you could try to reach out to them and see if they could be amenable to change?
I will ask.
I really, I want to keep those two committees under the same liaison, because they have some...
I see his face, but can't remember his name. The chair.
The chair, Ted Skwonsky.
Ted Skwonsky. He's still, I mean, all these chairmans, many turnover, I suppose, many reorganizes.
Um, I'll give him a call.
And Bob Kennedy is the...
Right, right.
Water, of course.
But that would be, that would be my issue with that, is if it is continuing, if it continues to be eight o'clock on Friday, I cannot make it.
Then, you know, I, I think we can work with that. Owen, because you have been involved with the pathways, I'd like you to assume that. I'd also like to turn over to you the capital improvement committee. I think that's gonna start picking up steam. The town chair has said that he wants to start looking at other opportunities for our capital improvement, and I think you would work in well.
Yeah, once we get our, that, that, the policy...
It's to do it every year.
Right. Then you'll, that'll start going.
Yeah.
And Rick and I talked about that committee specifically.
Oh, okay, good. I was gonna offer to take up the legacy Rockport Committee, and then I also saw Parks and Recreation, even though we've separated them into committees, they seem to have, you know, some overlap, and I think it would be good to have one person overseeing, or at least coordinating, make sure they're not running in opposite directions, where really, they need to work together.
So I can set up the snowball fight between the two towns and have the park properly set up.
Yeah, the Parks Committee can bring the snow in, and the Recreation Committee can help.
Public Works.
Your challenge with the Recreation Committee, as Tracy can tell you, is to get it going. But on the other hand, you know, you may have a line into different people in town than the board has had in the past, so that may be an opportunity for you to...
Well, MRC has already volunteered that they would help in support and put in the, you know, if necessary, a non-voting member.
Also Aldemir Farms.
And Aldemir Farm, too.
Really? Both of them have expressed interest in...
And, and when we were down at, at Penn Bay...
Oh, that's right, too.
For quarterly, they were also interested in that.
And that's also rec...
The problem is, is there's only three members, and so you have to get all three to show up to do anything right now.
Yeah.
Until they, until we can name more members.
Yeah, get to the five.
So at one point earlier this year, well, it's a long, interesting story.
We've chatted about it a couple of times.
Yeah, but now, I, I do have three assignments that I'd like to put out there. One is that each liaison needs to work with their committee to establish regular meetings, a regular meeting schedule. Now, if it's every other month or quarterly, the investment committee meets quarterly. They met earlier today for about 20 minutes, but that's what they needed to do. Other part, other committees may need to meet more. Some committees may only need to meet during the summer months, or the winter months, or whatever, but we need to know a schedule ahead of time, instead of, oh, we need to meet, let's do it next Friday, and then nobody can make it. So, the other is to review the bylaws and recommend any changes that may be needed to the select board. Tracy had started this a couple of years ago with a, a draft of...
Template.
Template, thank you. A template for it. But we need to make sure that their, their bylaws are really informative.
I think Parks did theirs, I think they accepted Parks.
Yes.
Rec several, several halves.
Cemetery House.
Yeah, Investment House.
Library was working on it.
Yeah. Yeah, and the capital improvement had it done, too, I believe, so.
I've never seen any for the pathways committee.
No, and that's a different one, because it's a two-town committee.
Yeah, because it's weird, yeah.
I mean, they do have, they have a lot of documents, but, and we did actually get them, was one of the things was to elect a vice chair, which they did, and, and an unwritten part of the, of the bylaws that weren't written yet was going to be that the chair and the vice chair had to come from separate towns.
Ah.
Chairman's from Camden right now, and the vice chair's from Rockport.
Yeah.
And just, Owen, I, I probably will continue to attend pathways for a short period of time where they're...
I hope that you will.
Well, probably, because I, I don't want to step on you, but they're in the midst of doing the Rockport Master Plan, and I want to see that through till it's finished, which I think is going to be in the next couple of months, and then I'll step back and you can take over.
Please, it's been a pleasure watching you act as liaison while being on that committee, because I, I feel that you gave me a really good benchmark of what a liaison should be. So, kudos.
The third is, our committees need to be preparing agendas ahead of time, because they really need, at least the committee meeting needs to be announced, and if possible, an agenda or a draft agenda published at the same time. State law doesn't require you to publish an agenda, it's our practice to provide as much information to the public ahead of the meeting. So if anyone wishes to, you know, make comment, they know what is coming up, so they can be there for it.
Where does that get published, on the town website?
It gets, well, actually, Stacy sends it out to a number of media, plus it goes up on the town website, and sent around when, when necessary to the committee members and the liaison. So, but, you know, it's, it's a good informational issue, so. With that, I'm done saying my piece about my suggested list.
Does somebody have somebody, does somebody have one that they could potentially swap with me if conservation doesn't work out? Is anybody willing to? I just, because I can't change my work schedule in that, that drastically, if you're not willing.
I mean, we can talk about it if, if need be, I can, you and I can work something out.
When does conservation meet now?
I think it's Friday at eight.
Right, I, I...
Is that...
My guess is that it's not the day, it's the time, that's, they like to meet early, I think, but I, I don't know that they're wedded to the, the day Friday, so...
Well, I'll, I'll contact Ted, or start by contacting Ted and find out.
So you're, Wednesdays and Fridays, you're busy?
For sure, but right now, I'm busy every day. I'm working five days a week right at the moment. So right at the moment, it doesn't do me any good.
Oh, okay.
I'm actually taking off on Wednesday, so I can come to the barbecue, the town. But right at the moment, I'm working five days a week, so.
It's good to be working.
It's not hurting my feelings.
No.
So, does anybody have any objection? Do we just want to say this is the way we're gonna go for now?
Sure. Does that need a vote, or just acquiescence?
It's our, it's our...
Well, it's us, so.
Acquiescence.
If you want to make a vote, you know, make a motion, you can, it's just, you know, these are our agreements, that we're gonna do this.
Ooh, when, when do either you, Mr. Chair, or Tracy come off of the MCO solid waste?
Next week, next year.
Yeah. Hers is next year, I'm the year after. We're elected a three-year term, no.
Okay, we're removing...
Yeah, we're on our election schedule. So she would be up. Now, if she wants to resign, and you want to volunteer to take it for the remaining year, I'll leave that to the two of you.
Next.
Moving ahead, we need to reappoint committee members whose terms are expiring, and this doesn't require of us, who are expiring on June 30th, 2015, to a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2018. However, we have one person that is, been determined that really would only needs to be appointed to a two-year term, so that the Harbor Committee can be back on a two-two-one schedule.
There it is. Want to go see our fire truck?
There he is.
Oh.
It's here!
They're a half an hour late.
We're gonna go look, or not?
Let's keep going.
Jeff needs, Jeff needs to...
He's sitting outside, he's sitting out there waiting for us to come out.
Okay.
He's scaring all the people upstairs.
Yeah, that's right.
We have had three people who had normally come up this year, who have declined to renew. Margaret Carlton on the cemetery committee, Ron Howard on the conservation commission, and David Gordon on the zoning board of appeals, which makes the zoning board of appeals even more critical that we recruit at least one, and preferably two, new members. The exception to this is Tim Hoffman is gonna, is intended to be reappointed for a two-year term, ending on June 7, June 2017. With that, I would take a motion to reappoint.
So I'll move to approve the committee member reappointment list.
For the term?
To new terms expiring June 30th, 2018, with the exception of Tim Hoffman of the Harbor Committee, whose term shall expire June 30th, 2017.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
I assume that we don't have to read down the laundry list of names that they...
That's why it says, you know, on the list.
Okay.
All in favor? We have passed. I would also ask that we prepare letters to these people who are not re-upping, to thank them for their service.
And also, just a general thank you to those who are re-upping, because these committees do a lot of vital work.
Thank you for your commitment.
That is correct. Our next item is reappoint town officers. We were given an updated list this evening for these town officers. So make sure you have the one that lists James Francamano twice.
But what about the alternate, alternate local plumbing inspector? That doesn't count for the same thing?
No, no, he can't do that, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that, that has to be...
Just the CEO.
So, we have a motion.
I move to approve the town officials' reappointment list expiring June 30th, 2016, as presented in the document given to us this evening.
Right, it doesn't have a different date on it, does it?
It's not the one that was in the packet.
Second, if we didn't get a second.
It's moved and seconded. On that, Rick, when we get, you know, things like, we really need to have a date when they were printed.
Or even ver...
You can date it.
Yeah, or versions, yeah, date time as to when they were printed, you know, so that we're all working, and we, we know we're working off the same document. The thing I would mention on this is that we still need to do the RFP or RFQ on the town attorney. So, we have the motion to reappoint. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the reappointments? That has been approved. The next item is approval of the Order of Municipal Officers Regarding Payment of Outstanding or Delinquent Property Taxes. And that's something we're gonna have to sign tonight.
I move to approve the Order of Municipal Officers Regarding Payment of Outstanding or Delinquent Property Taxes.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Can, can someone just fill me in on what the heck that is?
Basically, it looks like it's, whatever money we get in, we apply to the oldest balance first.
Yes.
It's different than the, the town meeting, we, we give the select board approval to place liens on property and foreclose on property for non-payment of taxes or wastewater, and this just tells us how we apply the payments.
Great. We do this every year. Last year, actually, we did it in July, but this year, we're ahead of ourselves, we're right on top of everything, so that we can get it all done. And we will have a similar one coming up under wastewater. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is a vote. This next one, I was at the, and, and we're gonna start using terminology here, because this is the way I know it, MACOG, which is the Midcoast, or, yeah, Midcoast Council of Governments, which up until last Thursday composed mainly of Sagadahock County and Harpswell and Brunswick out of Cumberland. They changed their bylaws to expand to include all of Lincoln, Knox, and four towns up in Waldo County. The reason being is that the MACAD, or Midcoast Economic Development District, is going out of business. They meet this, this Thursday, coming Thursday, to vote to go out of business. If they don't go out of business, they're out of business anyway, because there's no money for them. Everybody is, said, we're not contributing anymore, because one county, and I'm not gonna mention which one, said, we don't think we need to support... said, we don't think we need to support it financially. The other two counties, plus the towns in Cumberland and Lincoln or Waldo, were doing that, meeting their financial obligation. Without any money, they can't have any staff, that means they can't do any business. But it's going to be a perfunctory motion on Thursday. Jamie Francamano and I are going down to it, because we serve on the MACAD board. With that in mind, we are being invited, because the organization is changing. MACAD was organized under county participation. The county put money in for all their towns, or all their municipalities, which is where it fell apart. Because one county said, we're not putting anything in, which meant none of their towns were putting money in. MACOG, and the new iteration, is going to be by you pay, you play, at a municipal level. The counties can put money in if they wish to cover those municipalities that haven't contributed, so they can have a voice at the table if they wish. Rockland has already, they took a vote back, and I want to say it was like March or April, to say, we're putting in our 5,500, or whatever it was. It's on the back of the sheet.
Yeah, it is, it's 54 or 55.
Camden took their vote at their town meeting to put in their, what, 3,000?
3,600.
3,600. We sort of had said, we want to participate, and we're going to try to find that money. We haven't taken a formal vote to try to find that money. But if we want to have a seat at the table, we need to come up with 2,490 some dollars. One of the things that these economic districts do is they put out what they call the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the district, and they list projects that they think are top priority for economic development. We have been on there for the last two years for our sewer and fiber project. One project, you know, they consider it one project, sewer and fiber, where if we want to apply to Department of, actually, it's Commerce, but it's run out of Department of Agriculture. This is federal government, so don't ask me to explain how that works.
So does their endorsement help us?
Their endorsement, and if we're at the table, we can then tap into other resources. Some of the resources they have going on right now is, and I'm going to call it intermediary revolving loan program. It's a bridge program that has now been expanded to also cover microloans and origination loans. When that was expanded out of just Sagittawatch County to Knox County, Rockland has three or four businesses that are working today because they were able to access that money. Otherwise, they would never have started, and there's, I want to say it's somewhere between 50 and 75 full-time employees that they have or equivalents, not all coming from Rockland, but coming from typically elsewhere in Knox County. Camden has a couple the same way, because their economic development people pushed it real big when it came in, and now the banks know about it. If we're at the table, Rockport businesses have an access, or can have a leg up on getting that. There's a brownfields issue going on right now. Thomaston has received a couple. It's for assessment of potential brownfield sites. Camden is looking to have them come back in and look at the tannery site again. Hence, they want to put their money on the table, because they could get a lot more in return. I don't know if we have any, but we might. And all you need to do is say, somebody come in and say, maybe there, and it could put a hold on the sale of the property. But if the owners know ahead of time what the issue is, that can be taken into consideration and tap into more federal funds for remediation.
So I'm going to make a motion, so that we can get to the point of figuring out where the heck we're going to find the money. So I make a motion that the town of Rockport, and there's probably some wording here somewhere.
There isn't actually, you're on your own.
Join the newly created.
Oh, there isn't.
MCOG for the next year?
Yes.
It's an annual thing.
FY '16.
Yeah.
For fiscal year 2016.
I'll second the motion.
It's, actually, I think he has it on here. $2,495, or, you know, in that.
So, I do have a question, though.
Yes.
So, this is for the new members, does that mean that next year it'll be $1.50 per capita for everybody?
That question was raised at the MACOG meeting, and the idea is that, and their budget took into consideration that only $5,000 was going to come in. They're well over that. The idea is, if they get enough subscriptions, then it's not a $1.50. It may be a dollar, it may be 95 cents, or maybe a dollar 10. But the more that subscribe and put their money in, the lower the overall is, because what we're doing is providing for the staffing, you know, the.
So the more towns that support that.
Yeah, the more towns that come in. And I have been told that there are three or four out of Lincoln County, Damascotta being one, I don't know the other two, but I think Booth Bay is one of them, that have said, we're putting money in. So, there are Lincoln County towns that want to be part of this as well. So the more towns we get in, and if the county then comes in with more money, that brings ratchets down that next year's cost, too.
Did we have membership for MACAD?
We had membership, because the county was.
In the budget.
So we weren't paying directly, we were just, it was part of our.
We had a seat at the table, because the county was providing that money.
We're going to have to scrounge to find the money somewhere in the planning budget.
And what assurances do we have that they're not going to fold next year, and our money went to waste? Because we've ironed out the town-county dynamic?
I have the budget here that they approved. Their budget is fully paid for with the.
Inclusion of the.
With the inclusion of, oh, come on, here, oh.
Revenue.
I think 5,000, yeah, they were accounting on a total of $9,500 coming in.
This plus.
90,000 of that is coming straight from the existing communities in MACOG.
Yeah.
Okay? So, they're only looking at 5,000 from all the rest of the district, and they've already exceeded that.
Yeah, if they've got Rockland, then they've got, yeah.
Yeah, they're already up over $8,000.
Well, they've also, correct me if I'm wrong, you probably know better than I, but they've also taken the federal designation of whatever it is, of regional economic development from the MACAD, so that they have.
That's the vote on Thursday.
Yeah, right.
And that's basically the bit that we're buying.
Right.
Yeah, if there's the official one.
And, you know, the vote on Thursday is going to seal it. The, what they call the EDA, the next level up, has already blessed it. They said, you make it done, because there's no other example they can follow. They said, well, this is the first time this is ever happening, so, what you're doing is fine with us. So it's going to happen. Alan Brigham at the state, and he also has a seat down in Philadelphia for the Northeast Regional. They've effectively blessed it.
But, oh, and to your, to your question, reading between the lines, it's very likely that this particular formulation or formation of this intent is going ahead and leaving behind some personalities who, for their own reasons known only to them, may have sacrificed their county in despite of several towns within that county that wanted to keep going. So, as much as anything, if I may be so bold, it's a cleaning house of people that didn't want to be in the house anyway.
And the money is there for this next year. We get through this year, and sometime in around March of next year, they'll start looking at the next budget. And that's where they'll be able to say, you know, how much is the town participation is going to have to be on a per capita basis, and this is purely on per capita.
And we will be able to assess what the impact was on our town specifically. Was it worth the 2,000?
Is there a value? And it's not just to our town, it's to the businesses in our town or in adjacent that we rely on, or, you know, or either people come into us, or our people go out to them.
It may be that you don't see a year-by-year, you know, just a total return on the dollar. I'm guessing just having a seat at the table and being part of the conversation is worth the money. But you can't, you can't be eligible for some of these grants unless it's mentioned in the SEDS process, and in order to be part of the SEDS process, you have to have a seat at the table, or else nobody's going to pay attention to you. So, for us to move grants forward, it's kind of the cost of doing business. So, I mean, it's a small amount of money, we didn't budget for it, but I, we'll be able to, we'll be able to come up with it someplace in that budget. I think it's money well spent. Unfortunately, it's gone round and round and round in different iterations here. But we, you know, the federal government thinks it's important enough to do this, that they kind of force us to be part of a group.
Well, there's a long history behind it, I can bring you up to date on as to how we got where we are.
I definitely don't want to take up the time here, it's just one of those things, when you're watching a building collapse, and then someone's saying, hey, you should invest in the next building we're going to put up here, you have to ask questions.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any possibility that we get anything for the Goody's Beach water issue through this? Is there, I mean, you mentioned the brownfields.
We are working on another grant, there's another grant we're working on now. I can't remember the name of, but I know there's another grant that they're working through right now for Goody's Beach.
And I mean, if we could get something out of that, that'd be totally worth it.
A lot for the fiber optics, too, though, that we need a seat at that table as we move forward in the next 12 months on fiber optics. And if it means we can apply for grants under these programs, it's going to make a difference in what we can do.
Okay, we have the motion on the table with a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. We will move forward. The next item that we have here is setting dates and times for our workshops. I've listed out on there, it looks like seven. And we also had the one about the 125th celebration that we need to consider on this. I don't think we can establish dates on all of these right now. The future of the library, I think we want to hold until the library committee has had their next meeting and come back to us with their desire. Also, then we will have the CES physical, physical building study.
But could we set a date for that?
We can.
With that in anticipation, I mean, it doesn't make sense to wait to set the date, because then it just gets knocked further down the road.
And what would be your desire? I'm open for suggestions on that.
I'm, my time is flexible until all of a sudden it becomes not.
Yeah.
Which I know about a day ahead of time.
You know, I don't know how much time either of us.
I mean, does that make sense to you guys?
Well, Kathleen, anymore.
Does that make sense?
You're looking at the, on the 30th of June.
Yes.
And then when's the library committee meeting after that, in early July?
Yeah, on the 6th of July. So, you know, if we want to suggest a date to them.
As just a regular citizen now, I would ask, is this a select board workshop only, or are you imagining a library committee select board? In which case, before you set a date, do you want to talk to the library committee to make sure that that is?
Or do we want to reverse that and suggest a date for them to react to, and maybe. You know, it goes both ways.
Exactly.
Somebody has to start.
Yeah. Ken shows that he's going to be out of town from the 15th to the 22nd?
Yeah, I'm actually out the whole following week, too.
Oh, the week of the.
26th. 26th through the 1st.
Okay.
And that one just came up.
August.
Which, and I'm going to be out then anyway.
August.
So we're in August. Actually, I'll be back on the 4th. I'd be out on the 5th.
And I'm out the week of August, 10th.
And they'll count that whole week?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, 5th, 6th, 7th? Is that what we're looking at?
If we want to try to recommend a date in there.
Because you're back, you come back before.
Yep. Yep.
7th is a Friday.
Or it's, and apparently it's illegal to have meetings.
You've got conservation on here on Wednesday mornings.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, they moved to Wednesday, but again, again, yeah, that doesn't work for you, yeah.
So you're talking about the 6th? Like, that seems to be the date.
Okay.
Or the 17th.
August the 6th.
I mean, I would float August the 6th of the library committee, and then see what they say, and that way that gives us time to push it later if we have to.
Okay.
I mean, I propose that to just keep momentum going, and also because obviously it's tough to find dates. I don't, you know, I don't want to lose momentum, I don't know if we could, but I think it's appropriate to just keep going and.
Well, at least start a discussion.
Right. So.
Well, that gives the library committee also time to respond to the, both the.
Couldn't do CES.
Maginey study, and also the CES study, and maybe come back with some thought or initial recommendations.
Okay. That's taken care of. Wastewater visioning, do we want to have one this year? Or do we just want to wait until next spring and have it as part of our budget discussion?
Do we have anything else that needs to move forward right now? I mean, I'm just waiting for the final word, because I know I haven't signed off on paying them for what we've already done. I'm waiting for that last set of big bills to come in, but they haven't come in yet, but I presume.
Well, we have talked about those little projects up around Route 90 and Tropical Nails and stuff like that, but quite honestly, for me, I, I want, we want to be careful, I think, of bond fatigue with the voters. You know, I think we want to think a little more carefully about that, so I, I'm not in any hurry to do it.
If I, if I heard the note, read the note right, we are going to have next month a request by Fresh Off the Farm and Rockport Steel to connect.
Right.
And money's involved in that, but, so, but the work there has been done.
Yeah, they're, that's what we.
Grass and weeds are growing.
Yeah, but we still haven't given them that last payment.
Yeah. But, yeah, so let's, we want to hold on this, then.
I think so.
Yeah.
If we hear, Rick?
Yes.
If we hear from anyone along, you know, that stretch on Route 90, you know, keep us apprised.
Right, I haven't heard anything.
I understand that the chamber is sort of backing off and moving into that place on the corner.
That has come to a squeezing slowdown.
There's a lot of things going on, they don't know which way they're going.
Yeah, so, you know, that was, I think, part of our impetus there.
Given, given all of the other workshops you have that are pretty critical, I would think wastewater one is one that's.
Moving on.
Okay, fiber optic. The survey is going out.
Right.
Middle of this week. Was there a date on when they were due back on that?
They didn't have a date back, but the belief is, is that people will respond pretty quickly. If they're going to do it, they'll respond within a week. I would.
But then Tilson has got a time in there for their evaluation and digesting and writing.
They've been doing a bunch of the work already. They've done the analysis of all of the existing network we have. So they've done a bunch of the work of gathering information already.
Okay.
Just, you know, we're running out of days.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, when.
We don't want to be too early, but again.
Right, we need to wait for them to come back.
Exactly, we do.
We'll be thinking like six weeks after they sent, if they're sending out the survey tomorrow, what is the earliest we could potentially have a report from them? And I'm thinking at least six to eight weeks.
No, no, it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Okay.
You know, it's.
So, if the survey goes out this week, and then they ask for other responses next week.
Yeah.
You're through 4th of July, basically, at least.
I'm thinking, the reality is, they're going to.
And then whatever.
It's possible they could do it for the middle of July, but it's more likely to be the end of July.
So we're talking really mid-August for when we're available?
Right, yeah, it's a question of, then it gets into question when you're available.
Do you know when you may be out of town?
Me? I don't. August 6th, my wife is due to have our third child. That's about my only real commitment. I may have to leave if she calls me, but.
Okay.
I hope you do, because I can't imagine you'd survive not showing up to that.
No.
Just, just.
That would be a deal breaker.
Yeah, yeah.
There could be blood involved, and it would. My knowledge. Yeah. There could be blood involved and it would-
We'd be holding a special election.
And all of you will not be able to hold me back. I will make it to her.
Okay, yeah. I've been there. Um, can I suggest, uh, August seventeenth, then, a Monday?
Sure. It's as good as any.
Okay. We would want Tilson, I think, to be there.
Oh, absolutely.
We'll, we'll be able to know what Tilson has on that August tenth select board meeting to either push it back if we don't have-
Probably before that.
I will, I'll find out. Once you set the date, I'll, we'll work backwards from there.
Okay.
Did we decide what time we were having, um, our meetings this year, our workshops this year?
Um, I thought we were gonna continue to try for four o'clock. Is that acceptable? Is there an issue with four o'clock?
Works for me most days, yeah.
It's just-
Yeah, Jeff, here, catch or catch not.
It's becoming harder for me to do that.
Oh, oh, okay.
The earlier in the day is becoming harder for me, because I'm working so many days. And often I work until at least four or four-thirty, so, um-
Would that-
Would five then?
Five would be better for me.
Okay.
If we start a meeting at five, we just need something to eat. That's all.
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy doing it later, too. I just, it's, um-
Yeah, let me, let me know how that works.
Yeah, I, yeah. Seven is, you know, it's like tonight. I, I, I like the, the four or the five, cause it gives us incentive to get out.
Yeah.
Okay. Capital Improvement Plan, this is reviewing the policy that is being put together.
This, this one, this is one that, you know, in order for us to really work it into the budget process and everything, we need to get this, this one done. Uh, you know, we, there's been a, um, big span of time from when you guys looked at it the last time. And I think you need to take another look at it. Ginny's done some more work to it. Um, but it'd be nice to get this one done.
We had to, seems to me we looked at it fairly extensively, if I'm remembering right.
Yeah, you did.
I'm wondering, can we get it, get it emailed to us and do it in a regular select board meeting, or do we need more, more time?
I don't know. I-
Well-
I just got the feeling that you guys want, needed more time on it. I-
Can, can you email it out for us?
Sure.
And let's see what-
See what it is and then you can decide.
The reaction is?
Yep, okay. I can do that.
I know, you know, Ken had a lot involved with the, the first draft.
So-
And, oh, and this will be the first time you're seeing it.
But if I'm gonna be on the capital improvements committee liaison, I should start doing my homework sooner than later.
Mm-hmm.
I've spent so long, I-
Yeah.
Don't remember.
Yeah. That's my fear, is that when you get it, you'll, at a meeting, you won't remember it.
Well, if you can get it out to us sooner rather than later, then we could at least put it on the agenda for next month to schedule the workshop if needed.
Okay.
And maybe we can, you know, talk about it before that, you know, on meeting with you and see-
Yep.
Where we need to go with it.
Okay. Then I've got here the hundred and twenty-fifth celebration workshop.
Pre-budget.
So, the August twenty-fourth, you are not available?
Um, I can be available that evening. I can be available in the afternoon, like at five?
Twenty-fourth?
On the twenty-fourth?
Then we could see each other every Monday in August.
I'll, I'll-
No, you won't see me on the third.
That, that's a day that I'm planning on taking off.
Oh.
I, I'll, I'll be dropping my kid off at Bennington.
So, the twenty-fourth is out. What are we thinking about right now? Which one are we talking about?
The, this is the one that's not on there, the hundred and twenty-fifth celebration?
The twenty-fifth?
Well, Jeff, you're gone that week?
No, no, just that one day.
Oh, just that day?
Which day?
Just twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth.
Oh, okay.
Bad for both of us.
Oh, twenty, what about the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Do you prefer to stay away from that, right?
No, I don't, I s- I don't mind. I mean, I, there was a stretch where you were doing every Tuesday in a row a couple of years ago.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So, an occasional Tuesday is fine.
Okay.
So, I think that's a meeting where we have to stir up a lot of interest, get people to it and what have you.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is do we wanna, you know, throw the, the, you know, solicit members to join a steering committee? Well in advance of that date, so that could actually be an inaugural meeting of a steering committee.
I think we need to have more ideas before we do that. I mean, maybe-
It's like a wine keel's repeat.
There you go. I think we need to come up with a, a general plan of what we think we want to see. Whether that be, you know, cake and ice cream on the actual day in the town office and then eight weeks later having a festival or whatever. But I think we need to put a little time into that first to at least hash out what we wanna see. And then we can start beating the bushes and asking specific people to come aboard and, you know, go to Flapbrot and ask them, "Could you bring a, a pizza truck out on this day?" and that kinda thing.
Well, I'm, so you think that that meeting is, is in-house conversation and thereafter we bring in other people?
I mean, if we've got specific people, I just, it's, it's horrible to throw the doors open and say, "Come, we're gonna plan this," and then not have a plan.
I think, no, 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 but I, I appreciate what you're saying, but I think that, that the first meeting is actually come and give us, and, and let's do a big round table. And, and have it a cacophony. But, um, with, with nine other people in the room who have had several weeks to think about this, I think we're gonna come up with better-
A brainstorming session.
Initial ideas and considerations and reject some stuff. But, um, I think that that's, um, I, I, I think that that's an okay-
How to get people here.
I think it's an okay first step to do, yeah.
I think if we just do a press release, you know, publicity, there are several people that have meant, expressed interest.
Oh, I'm sure we'll get more, too.
Right. You'll get a lot more people that'll show up, um, at that meeting.
So, what do we decide on, the twenty-fifth?
Uh, the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth at five?
Yeah. Is that one we wanna do at five, or do we wanna say maybe six? Maybe we wanna bribe 'em with pizza?
Yeah, that's always good.
And I just, I, there is a very small chance I won't be able to make it. I know I have to leave the next day, but I might have to leave that evening depending on-
Ah.
Cause I've got a kid to take off to school, too.
Yep, yep.
So.
And just, real quick, the fiber and the one-twenty-fifth, they're both happening here in this current location that we're at?
Typically, we do them at the, um-
Usually workshops we have at the town office.
Yeah, it's like the Richardson Room, okay.
It never hurts to call a check.
Gotcha.
I wonder whether, to Tracy's point, we might wanna just throw the one-twenty-fifth on the agenda for our July meeting, just to have a brief discussion and maybe give us all a month to think about very generally what we wanna do. So, that gives us a little bit of prep time for this workshop.
Mm-hmm. I do think that would be a good place to have some pizza or snacks or something and invite people.
Already put a note down.
I mean, we might even wanna, uh, well, we should definitely put a press release in the paper and say, "Hey, we're planning a big party. Wanna come along and help."
Okay.
Hey, and Flapbrot will be open by then, so maybe talk them into making a-
Well, we have to be careful. We don't wanna, you know, just Mama's policy either. We gotta make sure we-
That's true.
Equal opportunity pizza.
Okay.
In fact, we could even have a contest.
Chairman?
Yes.
I gotta sneak out, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, you signed the necessary papers, okay.
So, we're on the pre-budget.
Okay, now we're pre-budget. Typically, we do that the last Monday in October. But I know already I have an obligation that Monday, and I would like to push it back to Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
Of-
October. Yeah. It's not on that calendar, right?
I have no idea what I'm doing.
Schedule it.
Yeah, schedule it. I'll either show up or I will-
It shows up, it shows up on my calendar as a Midcoast Solid Waste Quarterly Meeting, but I don't, I don't know that that's accurate.
Oh.
Yeah, Wednesday, that would be it.
I mean, is, I, my-
We've got two votes and he's got a third, sorta.
Yeah, we kind of have to be there.
Well.
That, it shows up on my calendar that way. That doesn't mean it's accurate.
No, that would be right, the fourth-
That, that is the right time.
Yeah, the quarterly.
That would be our quarterly meeting.
I've tried to show up to some of Jim's quarterlies and they didn't happen.
Well, we used to have a monthly. That's what would happen. They were on monthly if we were meeting.
How about the twenty-first? Can we move it up?
The twenty-first?
Yeah. That's a, that's also a Wednesday.
I have no idea.
Yeah, again, schedule it.
Okay.
So, that's- And is that gonna be another five o'clock?
Um, Rick, this is, this involves all of your people. Five o'clock would be best, right?
Yes.
At least to start, you know, we're gonna bribe 'em with food, you know, like we always do for this.
And we have, that's here.
Yeah, that is here and that is, yeah. Okay. Okay. ORC work plan formulation, do we have an idea, Ken, on when that might?
Uh, I mean, sometime in September is typically gonna be good for that and-
Okay.
I don't have a specific date in mind. I haven't talked to Jamie recently, so, I don't, I mean, I know we're gonna have the MOBEC thing coming right up, so that'll play into it.
Okay.
Certain, around as well, but-
Wait on MOBEC?
Well, we can pick a day if you want.
Well, you know, but talking about it, if, are we gonna invite anybody along to that workshop meeting? Cause we usually bright, invite planning and-
Planning, ORC and any interested-
So, maybe we should talk about that at the MOBEC meeting.
Okay.
Makes sense.
And say, you know, "Here's three dates. What do you think?" And we may still have to do-
I mean, I would, in general, I would like to see that ORC get to work a little bit earlier this year and have a little more time to digest things.
When we start the MOBEC discussion, won't that kinda trigger them to get started early, do you think?
It depends on what we come up with.
Yeah, depends on what we find out at the education session, yeah.
The decision may be that we don't wanna move forward with MOBEC and then they can just cross that off their list.
Well, I mean, MOBEC is either a yay or a nay. It's, it's not wordsmithing ordinances.
Right, so-
You either move to a dock.
I don't know necessarily that the ordinance discussion would come up at that workshop. I guess that's my, would be my point.
But it's a good time to bring it up, just-
We can bring it up for timing of the meeting, yeah.
To say, throw out a few dates and let's see if this will-
Put it on the agenda, say we wanna start the schedule this year, and I can try to talk to Richard ahead of time about that.
Is that MOBEC?
It's coming up soon.
It's in early July, I think.
Yeah, um, the seventh, July seventh, four P.M. And that's over at the town office.
It says six-thirty on here.
Yeah.
Oh, it's at the joint workshop, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, and when we had our meeting in April with the cemetery committee, uh, the suggestion was that we needed to consider expanding Seaview Cemetery. At the time, the suggestion was that we maybe hold that sometime in October. Do you know if your cemetery committee may be ready for October?
What is our six, what is our moratorium timeline? I'm sorry?
November the thirtieth.
So, we have to make some, we, we potentially will have to make some decisions before November the thirtieth as to how to progress after that. So, that meeting should happen before that. I would presume before our, uh, our November meeting, so that we, then we could indeed vote at our November meeting how to go forward if we want to change anything.
Okay.
Our November meeting is on Monday, the ninth?
Yes.
And I guess, um, I mean, the cemetery committee will meet, I assume, several times between now and then, and I don't, I'm sort of thinking that the cemetery committee would come up with some recommendations. I don't know whether we need to have a full-blown workshop or not, I, you know. I mean, the recommendation is gonna be whether to expand Seaview or not.
I mean, it might-
And also to deal with the, uh, some of the issues that to deal with, you know, do we wanna allow Camden residents in that neighborhood to, to buy lots in there?
I think it might be worthwhile to at least, or maybe to have a joint workshop with the cemetery committee to talk about what their concerns are about, especially Seaview.
Okay.
I mean, we could do that in a meeting, but to really have a discussion, it's probably better to have a workshop.
Yeah.
Because we just don't spend enough time together.
Well, we get it out of the way early.
So, we're talking about September?
Well, they were talking maybe October. Or we could move it back. Is, is, is the end of September too early? Do we wanna look at, like, the twenty-first? September twenty-one?
What's for me?
Okay.
So, we're talking about nine-twenty-one?
Okay. Does anybody know of any other workshops we need to put on here?
That's all?
Well, it was only eight.
There's gotta be.
There's gotta be more, you know.
Well, your next agenda item is-
Well, your next agenda item-
Well-
From the conversation I had last week, I don't think that's gonna happen.
I don't think we're gonna have it. I've got, I'm gonna go over and try to talk to John French. But he, he's their new chair over there. There was an in-house, house revolt, even though they were all the same members, they decided they'd rather have John as their chair. I talked to Martin. He was gonna go talk to John, see if John would contact me. I haven't heard anything. He was gonna mention to Pat, and actually, I mentioned to Pat on Friday that you and she needed to talk about it. And I'm guessing from the look on your face that that hasn't happened either.
Nope.
So, for now-
My brief experience with John, best way to get ahold of him?
Is go sit in his garage.
Sit in his garage.
Oh, yeah.
My thought was.
It's the best way to, I mean, I can always find him there.
I don't even call him. I never call him.
Yeah, just stop by if the door's open.
I never call him, cause I don't wanna hear him go-
Yep.
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 When the phone rings and he's busy and he's under the, under the hood of a car, I don't wanna believe in that.
Okay.
Never call him.
Now, we've got, um, one thing we need to establish. I had suggested a date of, uh, August eleventh uh, for the expectations for the town manager, but you're gonna be out that week. And the next day, Rick is heading off to his NEMI, whatever it is.
Midco, uh, the ma- the main town and city managers' institute.
Yeah, over in Bethel.
One week later?
Um, we, we're already meeting on the seventeenth for the fiber workshop.
Yeah, but we're already meeting on the tenth, and we were gonna meet on the eleventh, so now we're just doing the-
Okay, we'll move it back one week.
So, we're gonna move that down to the eighteenth.
Okay.
Of August.
Okay.
Eighteenth, so it's not gonna be August the eleventh.
It's gonna be Aug- eight, yep.
And what time are we gonna make that one?
Oh, five o'clock?
So, I, I was fixing something else. What was that, the date you just did?
Eighteenth.
August eighteen.
Five o'clock.
Are you gonna, are you planning on being away?
Yeah, cause it's an executive session.
Yeah, um, you know, if you haven't heard, the, um, sailing vessel Appledore has been renamed to motor vessel, MV Appledore.
Nice.
The motor works, as I understand.
Motor works, but-
It's just the masts don't.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be the floating condo, Appledore.
Yeah. I understand Robin doesn't care. She's just gonna sit there and read anyway.
She's happy if it's just sitting at the creek. She's fine with that.
Okay.
It's me that's struggling.
Okay, I'll try to get an updated, um, list out. Now, but remember, we're holding our, uh, workshop, goals workshop on July second, four P.M. Is that gonna be okay, four P.M.? Or do we need to push that back to five?
I think that week, oh, let me see.
Yeah. Oh, you're not here?
No, I'm actually gonna be here.
Oh, you are?
We changed.
Oh.
The child changed his schedule, so.
Okay.
So, you're thinking it's gonna be four?
July the second.
Second, yes.
What's July second?
That's when we're gonna hold our goals, our annual goals workshop.
I can actually do four o'clock that day, cause I had it.
Hold on, I, I'm looking at August eighteenth.
No, that's when we're gonna assign you your, your goal, your expectations.
Oh, okay.
We gotta figure out what our goals are gonna be.
This is the, here's fifty seven things we think we can get done this year.
Okay.
And then we'll go iteration by iteration and call it in.
You're looking at when?
Four o'clock on June.
July second.
July second, yes.
Thursday, July second.
July the second.
Yep.
Oh, that's, oh, okay, that's why.
Yep, because then, as soon as we're done, everybody goes on vacation for three days, right?
But then you guys have to get your completed goals list to somebody.
Yep, I'll get them back by the tenth. That's always me.
So what time are you talking about?
Four P M, town office.
On the second.
Margaritas would be appreciated. Oh, wait, we can't do that in town office?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Oh, wow, that was an idea.
Wait, wait, what?
You gotta stay?
Yeah.
Don't tune out, you start tuning out, you're lost. Okay, I'm gonna move forward to the, the last item under new business, and this is the vote to authorize the town manager to sign the Northeast Ambulance Service contract, and we have the agreement before us. Ken, do you wanna have anything to say about this? You've been more involved in this than any of us.
Well, it's an increase, a fairly significant increase. As they found that through the first couple of years of the contract, it was costing them a lot more than they thought. It's still less than what.
We were paying.
Than what we were paying to Camden First Aid.
And it's less than we paid, I think we were up at, up at. Oh, it is more, cause we're a twelve something for this year, right?
Right.
Why did Hope get rated as half town?
Because they only cover half the town, the other half of Hope is covered by Union Ambulance. Although that may change with time as well, but at any rate. Quite honestly, even at, at the significant increase, it's still a bargain. I mean, if you look at what, for example, Saint George pays for their ambulance service in just their one town, and, and it's, it's way more than this. And then they have issues of only having one, one vehicle down there, things like that, the service. In all the ambulance review meetings, we haven't heard one complain about the service, aside from the first month they were on, people complained about the sirens who weren't hearing them before and, and they addressed that, and so.
I live right on their path to Camden and I hardly ever hear them.
Yeah. So I, I think that.
Jeff lives just off that path and he hardly ever hears them.
I recommend.
Course you're never there.
We did look.
And I don't mind hearing them.
They did suggest some changes in staffing, to reduce the staffing to a certain level. And the review committee, and, and one of the changes was to, to drop down at night to, to the, to some portions of it, and I don't have it all at hand, where there would be no paramedic coverage for some portion of the night, and by doing that, they could reduce the cost to a certain extent. And the ambulance review committee felt that they wanted the paramedic coverage through the twenty-four hours, so basically, they offered us three options, one, two, and three, where three was the service level we had before, I believe. And the level one was, was reducing the paramedic coverage, so it wasn't twenty-four hours, and level two was in between, we have twenty-four hour paramedic coverage at somewhat lower level than they had before, and that's what the review committee went with.
And this is a contract that we work out as a town, specif, we're, we're not dealing collectively with the other towns like Midco Solid Waste.
Well, actually, we are, it's a, it's a four town contract, it has to be approved by all four towns, Camden, Rockport, Lincolnville, and half of Hope.
But it's not like Midco Solid Waste, which is an interlocal agreement.
Right.
Force of law. And basically, you know, when we took this out to bid two years ago and Jeff was there, you know, the other services that bid on it were higher by a magnitude of ten than the amount of money.
And, and not as, and at the same time, not as. They didn't have a business plan for the model to do anything except keep it up there.
Right.
Whereas these guys had the imagination and the, and the experience.
And I'm looking at the contracts, the third year will be twenty-three seven, and that's about what we were paying.
Right.
Five years ago to.
It was twenty-four thousand, the last, the last Camden First Aid was twenty-four thousand with aging vehicles and no plan to move forward.
So it's a, it's not a cheap thing, but I think it's still a good deal.
It's an excellent deal, I mean, if we had to provide this ourselves through our fire department, it would cost a huge amount of money.
Yeah.
Like I say, the service has been very good, they hired a lot of the Camden First Aid people, if many of you remember, the night we were talking about that, we had a full house in here, people saying, don't, don't give away our ambulance service, but the reality is that it's mostly the same people who are providing the service.
Yeah.
In negotiating the contract, we brought in, the managers brought in Rick Petrie. Who was very, very, very helpful in, you know, wading through for us, the, the four managers who are not. A paramedic savvy and all the, the jargon savvy, he was able to wade through this, the ser, the contract, and he actually recommended that we would be fine with the contract that was the cheapest for us, but the committee opted for not going down that, that level and, and going for the middle, the middle.
And I, I was actually okay with the cheaper one as well, but the others members on the committee felt strongly about.
Very strongly.
About the middle level and, you know, I see their point, I mean, it's, okay, yeah, we're gonna take a gamble on, on not having a paramedic on a certain shift, well, okay, what if it's your wife that happens to be on that shift and so it's.
Or your wife.
So, so I was comfortable with it and the committee felt strongly about it, so I think it's still an outstanding deal for us, they've been very good and. And they have the contract with Pen Bay, which helps them. And Rick also, the question was raised, cause they came back to us and said, we, we need to raise the subsidies and, and the question was asked of Rick saying, look, are they really losing money on this, or are they just not making as much as they wanted to, and Rick said, no, they're, at this level, they are losing money. So, yeah.
I moved to authorize the town manager to sign the Northeast Ambulance Service contract, that includes, what, the next three years?
Yep, it's a three year contract.
Commencing on July first, twenty fifteen and ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Yeah, it's moved and seconded, do we have any further discussion?
Those numbers that creep up over the three years, is that just general inflation, is that just general estimation of the cost of doing business?
It was a three year contract where they tried to soften the blow of the increase.
Right, rather than doing it all in one year, they decided to just.
It could've, you could, you can add all those up and divide by three and that could've been, we could've had a level fund for the three years, but there was a thought among the committee saying, we, we wanna avoid sticker shock as much as we possibly can, so that was the way it was done.
And if our population drastically increases next year, we're not gonna be hit with something until three years from now, three years from now, they'll reassess our population.
Right, it'll be readjusted at that point, and my guess is that our population in with, compared to the other towns is not gonna change that dramatically, if there's a population increase, I would think it would be.
Where, where it will change is if, if, if Hope opted to go with a full town being covered here, ours would go down a slight amount.
A little bit, yeah.
And I would say realistically, most of their calls are probably here, especially all of the auto accidents and, I mean, the things where you, you really need somebody.
Actually, that was my, I thought that too.
And no?
And I, cause that's why, my explanation of why we were paying more money in the first place was I thought that we have more of the traffic accidents, and it actually is Camden has most of the calls because of the, the skilled nursing places and nursing homes.
Who does the nursing homes? Four car pickups.
Yep.
Yeah.
So they have, they have far more calls, we, our, our cost was up simply because they were the ho, host community in the past, and the host community got a benefit because they weren't paying taxes, you know, the Camden ambulance wasn't. Camden was originally, if you remember, Camden housed the ambulance in the fire station, and so they got a, they got a benefit from that.
After they had the other building, it was a nonprofit.
Nonprofit, so they weren't getting taxes for it.
The rate was lower for Camden and that's been fact, otherwise our increase would've been more.
Okay.
Okay, the motion's on the table and it has been seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is a vote, we'll now move to wastewater commissioners.
I move to leave the select board to enter as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, I'm not gonna call for debate, all in favor? We are wastewater commissioners.
I move to commit the March twenty fifteen wastewater user debt fees totaling.
Whoa, 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 March?
It does say March, I'm just reading it.
No, it's April.
April, okay, I'm going over here, I'm sorry.
You did good at reading, though.
Move to com, I know, I'm not thinking anymore, I'm just reading.
Yeah.
Move to commit the April twenty fifteen wastewater user debt fees totaling twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
It's moved and it's seconded with the right date of April. Excuse me, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have one other piece of wastewater business to do.
I move to approve the Order of Wastewater Commissioners Regarding Payment of Outstanding or Delinquent Wastewater Charges.
Second.
Moved and seconded, this is a continuation of the one we had earlier, but now for wastewater. It's moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? We have passed that, we can now, do we have any other businesses wastewater?
Just one comment, and I got the, in Rick's office the other day, I got the, the receivables for wastewater, and there were a few customers there that were pretty delinquent on the commercial side, Country, and I don't have it with me, but. Country Inn was one of them, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, and I just bring that up.
Oh, you're right, this doesn't have the delinquencies.
I think it was this one.
Yes.
Oh, this one?
That one, yeah.
And I picked it up the other day.
Well, yeah, here's the twelve thousand, yeah, Country Inn, twelve thousand, three hundred.
They haven't paid for months.
Yeah, you're right.
So I, I just noticed that and I, I don't know.
That's, that's Pen Bay, they're always that big.
Well, yeah, there are some in there, but they were.
Well, they're only, that's the, one month is ten thousand.
Does the town not, do, do we not have something set in place that says you start accruing interest?
Oh, yeah, you accrue the interest, but if they don't pay it, it still just accrues more, I mean, sooner or later, there'll be a lien put on the property, but I, that one stuck out to me as a.
Yeah, Mike, I, I wonder, does, does it happen every year?
I don't remember.
They're getting into a busy time of the year now, so that they, they may.
This is the first time I remember them being that delinquent.
You know, over a hundred and eighty days and there's, that goes back to the last busy season, so.
Yeah, that's at least three months before that.
Yeah, that's a good question, so, anyway.
Maybe we can get a follow up from Jenny about when the last time they got, she got some payments from them, or what, what the next move is, if we feel like this number, well, we feel like this number is too large to be carrying, so what's, what are the next steps?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, the next steps are.
Just put a lien on the property.
Pretty prescribed.
Yeah, that's prescribed as a lien.
I think so.
But it was, I, I just, that one stuck out, it's, it's a little odd.
Yeah, well, isn't, oh, yeah, here, Bill Hahn again on Country Way Inn is, is all the way out there, those smaller numbers, still nine hundred, but it's the same, same location, all three of, all four of the Country Inn.
Three, four, whatever, Country Inn Way items are that way, they're all delinquent out, all over a hundred and eighty days, so.
We didn't get an update from Jenny?
So that's it, so I move to Exodus wastewater and return as select board.
Second.
All in favor? We are back in, let's go to liaison reports. I will tell you that I missed the May eighteenth library committee meeting, but I was here for the presentation on June fifteenth, I think that went pretty well. Wasn't as well attended as I thought it was gonna be, I guess, did we have a count of eight? Fifty-five, okay, I'd heard somebody else had eighty, but.
It's just because we were upstairs, so when we're down here, we're all.
Right, fifty-five, yeah.
Upstairs, you can spread out, there's a lot more room up there.
Yeah. The committee did meet before that on the fifteenth and they elected Kate Monroe as their chair, Stevie Cumbel stays as the secretary, and Eliza Hazelton was elected their treasurer. The final document hasn't arrived yet, as I understand, that was due in on Friday, but Bill, but Steve said he was gonna be late because some additional requests were made.
Right.
Yeah, so.
And I also got a little brief aside from him afterwards, he was also going through some significant family thing, so I, I'm okay with cutting the dude a little slack.
Yeah, well, you know, that's why it got pushed back from earlier in June, so, and the billing evaluation is due on the thirtieth, I think we're still on for that. I wanna remind everybody that the friends of the Rockport Public Library have their book sale coming up, July ninth to twelfth, there is no bake sale part of it this year, that, that was a couple of weeks ago. But Thursday, members only, from five to seven P M, so join, you can join that night, get first crack at all those books.
My wife loves this, tell me again.
July ninth?
Yeah, she's a member.
Member, if she's a member, not a problem, five to seven P M on July ninth, that's a Thursday.
M R C.
At M R C. Friday, it's open all day to the public, eight A M to three P M, Friday the tenth, Saturday the eleventh, it's open from eight to noon to the public, and then it'll close for an hour in box sales, will start at one, one to three P M, and then Sunday is the book giveaway from eight to eleven.
And in case you want to do some volunteer work, some of us will be there for the most part of that week, putting out books Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and on Sunday, packing them back up, anything that's left, so please, come buy them or take them home with you on Sunday.
And I wanna, I wanna put out an attaboy beforehand to our public works crew.
Oh, yeah.
Because they are instrumental in helping set up and helping take down, they, they shelve those books back in boxes and boxes and boxes and the tables and everything else, so, you know, another public work. Public Works event by our Public Works people.
Above and beyond.
Yeah, above and beyond, so, the investment committee met today, earlier today, they're still overall happy with Bar Harbor Trust and Savings, other than they have their quarterly complaint that Bar Harbor continues to insist on holding some in cash, and they have been told repeatedly, no cash, fully invested, if you can't fully invest it, send it to us. And they are running up some more, and so they will be, their, Bar Harbor Trust is being invited to come to the September twenty-first meeting, that's the annual, will be the annual review with them. Overall, they're very happy with the performance that Bar Harbor Trust has put in because they beat the market continually, so our investments are doing good. The issue with the cash is that Bar Harbor charges one percent for all assets held. If there's hold, held in cash, it's not earning anything, so we're being charged one percent on something that is not earning anything, so a year and a half, two years ago, we, they voted with our approval, take the money out, put it over at, I think it's at the first, and we're getting point eight five percent. So instead of losing one, we're getting point eight five in return.
Still held as cash?
As held as cash, yes, yes. And Jenny monitors, Jenny monitors all of these, we get monthly reports from Bar Harbor and of course, the statements from the bank. And Midco Solid Waste meets.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yep.
Because I don't spend enough days with you.
Yes. Oh, you love it, you just love it, yeah, okay, and their annual election is gonna be July twenty-second, that's the mandatory annual meeting, and they got plenty of things to talk about, so. That's my liaison reports, does anybody else have any?
Not much for me, pathways met, continues to work on the Rockport Master Plan and Linda Clancy is wordsmithing it for us, and we should be wrapping that up fairly soon. ORC hasn't met, cemetery hasn't met, ambulance review hasn't met.
That's why you take the pathways so seriously, I get it.
The Opera House Committee met and they, they, to get to the back end of it first, they have a tendency these days to not decide their next meeting and they do it by this little thing called droplet or.
Doodle?
Doodle or whatever it is, you know. So, but they had a, we had a very full meeting with one of the citizens of town, Jim Ruddy, got drafted into. The chairman wanted to ask him some questions and, and no one really knew why and what the questions were and what have you, so, so we talked about. Equipment upstairs and budgets and that sort of thing, and sort of reinvented the wheel, and then Bill Lane talked about what the engineers are doing on the thing, and he brought by some blueprints and areas of concern and things that were noted on, as, as they do get on the, on the blueprints for the bids to take care of, and explained why parts of it were, were pulled out of a single contractor bid, because the, you know, contractors didn't want the stuff in there too, so. So he explained all that, and then we ended up with John Veman, who was doing a huge amount of work on, on new websites that promote the, the Opera House and all of its incantations and incarnations. Not to mention iterations.
But they're happy with the work that's gonna be done?
They are, they are, yes, they, they were pleased to have the information and the information jived with their preconceived notions. And, and there we are. Very last page, some funny guy's signatures on it.
Okay. Oh.
And, and I apologize, I don't think that the zoning board has met since our last meeting.
They're, they're, they're due for the fifteenth, and they're gonna be, as I understand, they're gonna be talking about the Schooner Bay request.
Right.
The planning board met, but didn't.
Well, the planning board was doing preliminary review. Well, the planning board was doing preliminary review, so they weren't, so it's, it's an interesting thing, cuz it's that piece of property on seventeen with the big.
The garage.
The big garage where he kept his cars, and then the house, so it will be home occupation. I did, one of the questions I had, and it might go to O R C. at some point, and it might go back to comp plan, and I didn't go do the homework, which is why, why aren't parts of seventeen being handled the way ninety and one are, as far as commercial? Because it is a residential area, that's why they have to go to zoning.
Yeah.
So it's something to think about, I'm pretty sure it comes from comp plan, that seventeen, that ninety and one were mentioned as far as being, you know, mixed use, but seventeen was not.
Oh.
But there are sections of seventeen that are very commercial.
Oh, yeah.
So that's something we wanna, wanna think about as far as O R C. is concerned going forward. They worked on moving some subdivision around, which are nothing major, which, so I don't think they had too much going on this month. But it is kind of exciting, the whole Schooner Bay taxi, for those of us that went to any of those transportation meetings that we had last year, year before, whenever we had those transportation meetings, and talking about essential services, and how essential, I mean, the, the planning board really kind of got an education on, on what essential services mean, and how much taxi services do on so many levels for this area, because we don't have public transportation, and there are a lot of different programs that the taxi services participate in, to help low-income people, to help, you know, people going to doctor's appointments and such, there's, it's not just, you know, somebody calling a taxi, having them come and paying them, there are, there are a lot of other things in place because we don't have any other, right, because we don't have public transportation available. So I, I think it's a, I think it's a good thing, and I think it's a good place for them to be.
Yeah.
Out there on seventeen.
Did any of the abutters show up?
Nobody showed up to the sidewalk, and nobody came to the, to the, to the pre-app last week, and I was told, though I didn't see the list, and I didn't ask to, I was told that all the abutters were notified of both the sidewalk and of the meeting, so, you know, people could have just come over to see what was up, but they didn't seem to have any.
Sort of isolated.
Right.
I mean, I think there may be one or two neighbors that might be concerned about traffic in the middle of the night or something, but.
And there's a lot of commercial use out in that.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm presuming that the, the planning board will ask those questions when, you know, push comes to shove of, you know, how many, I think they have eighteen vehicles, I think is the number, but they aren't all on the road all the time.
And they're not all working out of there.
Right, and the reality is, from what I already heard, was that, you know, they may, that may be where they go to bed, but once they go out of the barn, they're kind of gone for whatever the shift is they're in, so it's not like they're back and forth. So I don't know if it's really gonna add that much traffic to seventeen, to be quite honest.
Seventeen's a major thoroughfare anyway.
Right, right.
You know, even if they have another eighteen vehicles moving three times a day, it's not a whole lot, considering.
And that technically, all of those drivers are professional drivers, so it's not just, you know, customers.
Doing donuts in the road.
Well, no, it's not customers just coming in and out of a retail establishment, so I, I feel good about it, they'll, they'll come back next month with, you know, with an actual plan and all of their paperwork put together, but that was a pre-app this month, and so they'll see Z B A. this month, and the next month, they'll come back.
Okay.
Do we, speaking of planning, we had the resignation. Just wondering, do we as a select board need to reach out or recruit?
I've been working on it, but I have not, I got turned down by somebody already.
I actually, I'm in for zoning, but I was thinking about it two years ago, and I think he might be ready soon.
We need somebody really on zoning, of course, planning, you know.
Yeah, the, yeah.
Those two are really critical, yeah, you gotta look for the one, it's, there you go, right there.
Jeez, and you can't read any of our handwriting, so I don't know why we sign these.
No, you don't have any lien on reports yet, do you?
He's not there yet.
I don't, but I have a brief comment, and we don't have to solicit conversation tonight, I'm just throwing it out there. Flatbread.
Yep.
And Lysin, Dave Jackson, and all the people that came to be present for one agenda item all could have probably been out about twenty minutes earlier if the town manager's report was after public things.
Okay, let me give you, I'm Steve Beveridge tonight, let me give you a little history on that. We, or maybe I deliberately decided to hold it earlier because the information that he is imparting is very important.
Very much so.
And, you know, that, you know, having it as an item earlier in the agenda, even the people at home have still not dozed off, hopefully.
The other thing, the other thing is that as we are more regular, and as people realize that we are live streaming it, they could be at a local establishment getting ready for the, for their time on stage, and come in, you know.
I don't think Shepherd's Pie has Wi-Fi.
Well, you have, you have that on your phone.
Well, they're not.
And like I said, we didn't have to discuss it tonight, I was just throwing it out there.
We have discussed it previously.
Historically, we do try to have the people who are coming to hear us, if we will move agenda items around so that they can get out here a little bit earlier.
But that particular item, we have discussed.
And it was interesting, I chit-chatted with my wife about it, and she was very much backing you all up, that this is hugely beneficial information for, and I said, but yeah, but what about when I'm, what if I'm Mama's Boys or something, and I've got childcare, and I have to sit for these?
I estimate ahead of time when they will be on, and let them know, I failed to do it tonight with the Flatbread people. I realize that when they were sitting there, but usually I'll tell them for the public hearing, plan on no earlier than seven thirty.
Move to adjourn, so Tom can start breaking down.
Oh.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? It's unanimous.
They're gonna have to call.